We'd like to call to order the Monday, July 15th meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. At 5:30, we had a work session with Mr. Woody presenting us some of the changes that have happened in planning and inspections. And at 6:00 PM, we had a work session discussing a proposal to amend the Unified Development Ordinance and a rezoning for Elon vacations. At this time, I would like to ask Reverend Keith Ham from Harbinger Church of Christ to lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Absolutely, and it is Powell's point, Christian church.
What did I say?
It says it on Harbinger on there, but I didn't want anybody to go looking for it and not be able to find it.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Father in heaven, we thank you so much for the opportunity to gather here. Lord, I ask for your guidance, direction, and blessing upon each of these commissioners. I thank you for them, their dedication to this county and to leading this county. But Father, I ask that Lord Jesus, you would strengthen the families of this county, the people who are struggling, those who are struggling financially, those who are struggling as families, the children that attend our schools. I pray that these commissioners will make good decisions on their behalf and that they will be leaders in this community. And I thank you so much for that. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. And all who have gathered here to speak and to hear, I ask for your richest blessing upon them as well, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a nice evening. Before we approve the agenda, I need to make two additions to the consent agenda. Item five, resolution to surplus administrative vehicle. And item six, budget amendment to replace that administrative vehicle.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second that motion.
Have a motion or second. Any further discussion hearing on all those? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Next item is public comment. Mr. McCree, we have a whole lot of people signed up tonight, so tonight I'm going to ask you to keep the clock at three minutes, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
First, we have Ms. Mary Etheridge. And when you come to speak tonight, we always ask that you restate your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Mary Etheridge, and I live at 846 Shawboro Road, Shawboro. My family and I have been involved in litigations with Currituck County since 2011 over illegal spot zoning in our neighborhood. At that time, Mr. Griggs and Mr. McCord were not serving on the board, and Mr. Martin was the only county commissioner voting against allowing a junkyard to be located in our neighborhood. At the last three county commissioners' meetings, I have spoken to inform the citizens of Currituck County what our family has been made to endure, and hopefully by informing the public, this will not happen to another citizen of this county. Quoting from the University of North Carolina Institute of Government Post Statutorily Required Public Comment Periods by Fleming Bell quoting, "As a practical matter, if someone wishes to complain to the board about its actions or those of one of its members, the only place where these concerns may be raised publicly in front of the entire body is generally during the public comment period or at a public hearing." After I spoke at the last commissioner meeting on July 1st, Chairman O'Neill made the following statement, "Sure, since we are going to have to play out in public every week, every meeting, I guess we just well play the game. Mr. Chairman, in all due respect for the position that you hold, this is not a game to my family. It is not a game when we have borrowed money on our home to keep a junkyard from being located in our neighborhood. It is not a game in knowing if we had not mortgaged our home of 34 years, there would be a junkyard behind our house today. It is not a game when six commissioners are told by the Technical Review Board, the Planning Board, the planning staff, the sheriff, the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resource, the county attorney, the Board of Adjustment, that it was not a good idea, but they voted in favor of it anyway. It is not a game to have to continue to fight your own county government when the applicant has withdrawn his application for a special use permit for a junkyard in February of this year on land that he never owned. It is not a game to have to fight your county government over protecting your property rights. And I'm absolutely certain it would not be a game to any one of you if you thought a junkyard was coming to your neighborhood or within 500 feet of your home. Also, at the last meeting, Chairman O'Neill asked the county attorney to make a statement concerning the litigation. I must apologize, but even with my involvement in the litigation, I did not quite understand the attorney's legal terms in his explanation."
That's time, Mr. Chairman. Please finish, Ms. Etheridge.
His legal terms. He did state that when he argued before the court that the commissioners did not act whimsical in their decision. The definition of whimsical is unpredictable, determined by chance or impulse, or whim, rather, by the necessity of reason. If the county attorney would like to explain to me and the citizens of the county in layman term why their decision was not whimsical, but a necessity of reason, I would like to know why. When, one, the Technical Review Board said it was not a good idea. Two, the commissioners, own professional planning staff hired by the county said it was not a good idea. The planning board said it was not a good idea. The sheriff said it was not a good idea. Number five, the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resource said it was not a good idea. And six, when the county attorney told the commissioners it was indeed spot zoning, and they needed to establish sufficient findings and establish a reasonable basis for their approval, they disregarded his legal opinion. So how can it not be whimsical or unpredictable when six commissioners went against everyone's recommendation and voted to allow a junkyard in a neighborhood? Yes, this is not a game. This is reality. And I'm sorry if Mr. O'Neill thinks that it's a game, and I pray that none of you think it's a game. But it is reality, and all we want is to be treated fairly, and hopefully we want to treat others fairly, too. This is all we've been asking for, and hopefully you will see that. But if not, it must be a game to the rest of you also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Etheridge. And since we're going to play it out again tonight, Mr. McCree, could you please explain for the audience what actually happened?
Well, what I was speaking about with regard to the board not acting whimsically or arbitrarily was in the court's finding that there should be no award of attorney fees paid by the county to the plaintiffs in this matter. As I explained at your last meeting, the general statutes have been amended within the last couple of years to now provide that a court may, in its discretion, award attorney fees to a plaintiff suing a county, town, or city in a zoning action, and if they prevail, if the court finds that the Board of Commissioners acted beyond the scope of their legal authority. Well, in this case, the court didn't make that finding and determination in its discretion. And I surmise, as I stated at the last meeting, that that's because the board certainly acted within its legal authority in making a legislative zoning decision. Although some might disagree with that decision, it's still within your legal authority to determine what is the proper legislative zoning action to be taken in a matter before you. The next piece of the statute says that a court must award attorney fees if it finds that a Board of Commissioners acted in an arbitrary or capricious manner. And so what I explained at the last meeting is that our courts have defined for us what the term arbitrary means, at least in the legal world. An arbitrary and capricious means, according to our courts and other cases that have looked at this, that means that a decision has been made in a whimsical manner, without due regard to the material of the matter before the board. I even said I used the words, "an off-the-cuff decision," flippant decision. And so the court in this case did not make a finding that the board acted arbitrarily, capriciously, whimsically, off-the-cuff, flippantly, because, I surmise again, the court made a determination that the amount of material that the court had before it, which came from this board's action, was quite significant. I mean, it was a document, a stack of documents probably close to a foot high of matter and material that had been before this board from the very beginning of this application, from the pre-application meeting that was required between the applicant and planning staff, to the community meeting required by the UDO between the applicant and members of the neighborhood or community in which this facility was to be located, and the zoning action was to take place, to the Technical Review Committee that took a look at this matter with the applicant to make comments and recommendations of how to make this application better and to fit and be more in keeping with the UDO requirements and the community in which this facility was to be located, to the Planning Board, and the opportunity for the public to present comments to the Planning Board, and then ultimately to this Board of Commissioners, where of course you had a public hearing and received comments from the public. So all of that together certainly could, and I believe in this case did, lead the court and this judge to make a determination that the board did not act as it relates to the awarding of attorney fees in an arbitrary, capricious, whimsical, off-the-cuff, flippant manner, that you indeed had a significant amount of information before you, you were acting in your legislative capacity in which you may use your discretion and make a determination as to what weight to give information before you in order to make a decision. Now again, people may disagree with the decision that you made, but you are the elected body with the full legal authority to, on behalf of the people of the county, to make a determination as to whether an application before you meets, in your opinion and in your discretion, the requirements of the county's Unified Development Ordinance and Land Use Plan. And that's what you did.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just as a point of clarification, I'm trying to understand, Mr. McCree, Ms. Etheridge is referring to a junkyard. Was this presented as a junkyard or as a recycle center?
Well...
Junkyard to me is junk cars, whatever.
Well, you kind of had some, touched on this discussion during your work...
I'm not trying to get...
Well, I'm just saying, you kind of touched on this during your work session. It's probably helpful to remind you and help the public understand what you have before you in a rezoning matter. In this particular case, the rezoning, it wasn't conditional, was it, Mr. Woody?
It was conditional, and the UDO, the use that it was applied for was under the junkyard, salvage yard use in the zoning ordinance.
So you did have to have before you that application. So you would have the ability to place or impose, as you talked about earlier tonight, on an application coming before you this evening, certain conditions or requirements, again, to attempt to lessen the impact of this particular use on the surrounding neighborhood. And that was one of the arguments, or part of the argument, I made before the court, and why that this was not illegal spot zoning, but was spot zoning that the court should have upheld.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Next, we have... Last name is Crowley. I can't make out the first.
Jim.
Jim, okay, Jim. Please name and address, please.
Good evening, Currituck County Commissioners. My name is Jim Crowley, and my wife, Ann, and I live at 114 Trevor Way in Launch Landing. We're both retired and have enjoyed living in Moyoc for the last nine years. It is important to my comments and perspective that you understand my work career that covers 57 years in mechanical construction/service, with the last 40 years in facilities maintenance management. This includes international data centers and call centers, contact lens manufacturing, city government facilities, and vehicle manufacturing. I have been involved in feasibility studies, building design, construction, and commissioning of many facilities to include computerized maintenance management systems, building automation systems, and security. Living in Moyoc, my wife and I have found an atmosphere of neighborhood and community that I have not experienced in a long time. Also, there's a unique feeling of having some room. This room allows my wife and I to have several pets. And don't you find it interesting that Currituck has the greatest number of pets per person compared to the national average? In our neighborhood, almost every family has a pet. Currituck, if you add the hunting dogs, Currituck is a pet-friendly place to live, and from what we all read about home building in Currituck, there will be many more families and many more pets. All this talk about community and pets brings me to the main reason for being here and wanting to talk to you. I want to say thanks to you and your efforts and diligence in providing for a new facility to house the Currituck Animal Control and the Currituck Animal Shelter. As you well know, the existing facility is old, overcrowded, and needs to be replaced. A feasibility study commissioned by the county originally recommended 13,750 square feet for the combined animal shelter and animal control. The idea of putting both services under one roof is a more economical approach rather than two separate facilities. This combined facility will be able to offer to the public education on the humane treatment of animals. The shelter will provide the means for many animals to receive humane treatment and set the stage for many more to be adopted by existing and new residents of Currituck. I respectfully request you build the new shelter to the size recommended in the original feasibility study. Thank you again for your work and effort to provide this service. And by the way, the 27th of this month, there'll be a bunch of us out at the animal shelter doing a general kind of cleanup to make it look pretty and help out the dogs, and each and every one of you is invited. Come out, help us, help the dogs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next is PJ Hobert. And if I slaughter your names a little bit, cut me a little slack, because sometimes I can't read some of the writing too well.
I printed PJ, that's easy.
I got it. I got that right.
Hi, I'm PJ Hobert, and I live in 119 White Herring Drive in Currituck, and I have a business in Moyoc. I have a thrift store, and we have a lot of people come in, and for eight years, I've been telling them, yes, we are going to have a new animal shelter. I'm kind of running out of excuses, and now I hear it's going to be cut down less than what we really need. I might have to tell my customers that we're building something that's not going to be adequate. This county is growing, and like the gentleman said, we all love our pets. And Ginger has worked very hard to make sure that the pets are taken care of, and I think that Currituck County should be proud of what they're going to put forth. And when people come new into the county, don't have something that's small and inadequate. Let the people see that we're proud of our county and our pets and our commissioners. Because when people come in and ask me, I say, "Ask your commissioner. I know nothing about it." I'm out of excuses. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ann Pitts.
Hi, I'm Ann Pitts. I live at 102 Blue Herring Cove in Rivers Edge, and I am a Coast Guard spouse. And we moved here about four years ago. First, we rented in Eagle Creek, and we ended up enjoying the area so much. We did have the opportunity to move away. My husband's now doing a 50-mile commute to Portsmouth, but we decided to go ahead and purchase a house in Rivers Edge because we enjoy Moyoc and this area so much. But I have to tell you, as a spouse, we have certain secrets that we do when we're moving to a new area to try to decide whether or not we want to live there. And one of them is to go through and see if there's stray animals running around, starving dogs tethered out in the yards, those kind of things. And then I drove around, and I saw all these beautiful government buildings, and I thought, wow, you know, this is a real forward-thinking area. And then I went to the animal shelter, and I was shocked to see the condition of it. But then I met some of the people who are helping out out there, and they were telling me, you know, all the plans for the new shelter. And so I'm here just to speak to say, you know, please build something adequate that represents the values of this community, because I know that everybody here is a real kind and caring community. We've been so welcomed, and we plan to stay here even after my husband retires. And so I'm hoping that we'll have a large enough animal shelter. I used to work actually in San Antonio before I moved here at a large shelter called the Animal Defense League. It's the largest shelter in South Texas, and I was the director of development there. And we started working with them through a Matties Fund grant. We got a $7 million grant with the city. And so several of us nonprofits all kind of worked together on the No Kill Initiative. And recently, the city has gotten so involved in the No Kill movement there, they just granted ADL a $2.2 million grant just for dog kennels. So they've got their brand-new animal control, and then now they're also investing in other nonprofits to help get those animals out so they can get adopted more easily. And so that's just for dog kennels, no office space, nothing like that. So, you know, it takes a community to get this going and, you know, to show that we think this is a value and an asset to the community. And I know you guys are really great stewards of our taxpayer money, and so I just want to encourage you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Clell Holmes. I was born and raised in Currituck. My parents, my grandparents, my great-grandparents are from Currituck. So I've been here a lot longer than most people in this room, and I have a heritage probably longer than anyone in this room. I live in the best part of Currituck, in Coinjock, on Water Lily Road, five houses from the best restaurant in Currituck, which is Marina. And I am the crazy guy with the Christmas lights. If you don't know anything else, you'll see my lights, because I'm going to start soon putting them up again. First of all, I'd really like to thank the Commissioners for your time and effort you put in in governing Currituck County. I'm sure that you are compensated in money, but I'm sure you don't get enough money for all the pain and effort you put in. I just know that. And I realize that you cannot please everyone. You can probably only please just the very few of us. Tonight, I'm standing here with concerns about the Currituck Animal Shelter. I've lived here a long time, and I can remember when we had no, we called them dog catcher, it's animal control now, and we had no shelter. And I'm ashamed to tell you what we used to do to get rid of dogs and cats if someone dumped them on your house. You either kept them, or you dumped them on someone else, and I've done that. You just took them down the road four or five miles and dumped them on their house. Or you did things that I'm not going to tell you about. And it's not very good memories for a person even at my age of what we did to dogs and cats, because we didn't have any other choice. We now have animal control, and only two years ago did I realize that animal control and the animal lovers are two separate organizations. I thought we had animal control, and they got them, and they took them. But we have a group of people that care for them, love them, get them so that it can go back in public, so they won't scratch you and eat your eyes out if you get them. And they do have to put some down, but they also adopt them. I'm excited that we're getting a new animal shelter. I've got off my notes now, but I'm excited because for generations, families can bring their kids to the animal shelter, and hopefully in a good environment, and adopt them out, save them from being euthanized. And I'm sure they do it a lot more humanely than we used to do it, and our parents did, and our grandparents did, but they still have to euthanize dogs and cats that can't be socialized or cannot be adopted out. So I urge you to support the animal shelter. I sincerely hope that three or four years from now, once it's built, we don't ride by the animal shelter and see a bunch of trailers out back because it wasn't built big enough, like we did some of our high schools, the stuff that we built in Currituck. I thank you for your time, and I hope I never have to do this again.
Thank you. Next, we have Delane Spruill.
Hi, my name is Delane Spruill, and I live at 118 J Court. I am a 20-year resident of Moyoc. My daughter and I volunteer weekly at the animal shelter. We enjoy walking the dogs and playing with the cats. But to be honest with you, it took me a while to build up the courage to actually go into the current building. It's uninviting, it's small, it's dilapidated. So I want to thank you. That's one of the reasons why I am here tonight. I am so thankful that we're finally moving forward, and we're going to get a modern shelter for Currituck County. It will be so wonderful to be able to walk into a modern 21st-century building, a place where citizens of this county can feel good about stepping inside, a place worthy of being in our new government complex, blending in with the YMCA and the senior center. The main reason I'm standing here tonight is that I really, really want to stress how important, and you know, this planning phase is. It's so important that we take the time and we build for the future. Please realize how the shelter must not just meet the needs of our county today, but it must carry us into the future. Currituck County is growing. I've watched it change over the 20 years that I've lived off of Puddinridge Road. So please, don't just build a new shelter that's modern and stop there and think that you've done a good job, because it is more than that. You have to consider the number of people that will call Currituck home in the next decades. The numbers are growing, and the number of people will grow, and the number of pets will grow. You wouldn't want to underbuild a new home for yourself. You're going to think ahead, and you're going to think about your family. So please remember this when you're doing the final budget for the new building of our animal shelter. Please, please, try not to underbuild it. The shelter is a temporary home for many, many loving animals, and we need the extra space in the years to come. So thank you.
Thank you. So does Caroline wish to speak?
Hi, my name is Caroline Spruill. I live at 118 J Court, Moyoc, North Carolina, and I am an eighth-grade homeschool student. I volunteer at the shelter once a week. Our current shelter is old and outdated. It often needs repairs and maintenance. Also, our current shelter is small. I have seen several shelters in Virginia, and I know our new shelter here in Currituck deserves to be just as modern and spacious. A new shelter built near the YMCA will bring more people out to adopt animals. Please remember to build the new shelter to hold more animals, so as Currituck grows, our shelter will be able to house all of them. Every animal deserves a home. Our new shelter needs to be large enough to accommodate every animal until it finds a perfect family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am fighting a sinus infection, so I'm a little hoarse, but I will get through this just fine. My name is Brian Bass. I live at 196 Mariners Way in Moyoc. I've been in the county for 27 years. And the issue I wish to speak on, we have covered the benefits of having an adequate shelter in the county, that we, the old shelter, is being destroyed, and we need to build a newer and modern shelter. The points that I want to make is that, given the growth which we are expecting, and I think everybody saw the article about Laurel Woods a few weeks ago, that permits are going up in this county, so it is finally starting to happen. The real estate market is turning around, so we are going to see some growth. But I think we need to look at the original feasibility study, where a shelter was proposed at 13,750 square feet, and lock in on that. at 13,750 square feet and lock in on that. But more importantly, I think we need to look at the dollars, that if we try to expand the facility, say in five to 10 years, we don't know what the rate of inflation will be. Interest rates are going up, so we've had very low inflation over the last 10 years, but that may not be the case five to 10 years down the road. So I think that's something that this board needs to look at just to be, have done their due diligence on the possibility of future inflation. Also, the logistics problem of expanding the facility in the future. Part of the facility may have to be shut down to do an expansion. You've got the YMCA there, the soccer fields are coming in the future. So those two reasons coupled with the growth in the county, I think the board would do well to look at the original feasibility study and build a shelter that large. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Beverly Belcher.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Beverly Belcher and I live at 126 East Canvas Back Drive on Bell's Island in Currituck. I have been a resident of Currituck County for 20 years and I would like to thank you for hearing our suggestions concerning the animal shelter. I'm a volunteer at the shelter and work with the animals to socialize and exercise them. I have also worked with the teen program, the shelter's sponsoring this summer, to educate young people on how to better take care of their animals or how they can become a vet, a vet tech, a groomer, or zookeeper, or anything that they might want to explore in the animal world. Expenditures on animals are in the billions. Our county, as well as the surrounding counties and Hampton Roads, have doggy daycare, pet boarding facilities, dog trainers, dog groomers, and specialty stores for treats and supplies for our animals. I am a pet owner, so I know how much money one can spend on their pet. And as Jim said, Currituck has more animals per person than the national average. We are big animal lovers here in the county and have many folks coming down on vacation to Corolla and Coroba Beaches who bring their pets with them. Our shelter services these beaches, beach areas as well. When a pet is found roaming, whether it is because of a pending storm or they just get separated from their owners, they are brought to the shelter. Pet owners care that their pets are being cared for until they can claim them. A smaller shelter than proposed could not possibly accommodate the number of animals that could possibly be brought in on a daily basis, especially during the summer. We want our residents as well as our visitors to know that our shelter can meet their needs as well as assure pet owners that must surrender their pet, that we are prepared to take their animal and have the resources to find it a forever home. There is no need to euthanize healthy animals. As a matter of fact, I find it criminal. Please, let's show others around us that Currituck loves their animals and can afford to take care of them by giving us the proposed shelter space that we need. And I thank you for that time. And on that note, I would like for you to see a few of our forever families that have been blessed by the animals in our shelter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ginger Sykes.
I'm Ginger Sykes. I live at 111 Mallard Drive in Currituck. After 22 years, the county is close to getting an attractive animal shelter that will create the sense of pride that has been inspired by the new extension building and the YMCA. This new shelter has many beneficial features that a modern shelter should have. We need to be sure that this new building that combines animal control and the animal shelter will be at least 10,000 or more square feet so that we can adequately house the number of animals that we get in. The original study, as pointed out, recommended more than 13,000 square feet with the animal shelter part being 10,575 square feet. Now the space that's proposed for both the shelter and the animal control part of it total just over 10,000 square feet. With a lot of rearrangement and a little bit more than the 10,000 square feet, for a short while, we can probably meet the needs of the county. This doesn't allow us any extra room for the housing developments that are going up that will bring more people and more animals. Size matters. We don't want to celebrate the grand opening of this long-awaited new shelter with a grand euthanasia day because we have more animals in the old shelter than we have space for in the new shelter. That would be a shame. The $2.5 million limit that the county set in the proposal is within the parameters shown in the feasibility study, which suggested a preliminary construction budget of up to more than $2.6 million. According to the shelter designer who did the study, newly-developed animal shelters are highly specialized buildings. They are built more like modern retail or medical spaces than past shelters that look more like warehouses. This shelter in the new Currituck Community Park is going to be one that is going to be modern and inviting, which will enhance and lead to more adoptions. Many people love their pets and love them passionately and gain great pleasure from having them. Americans spend billions on pets. The animals of Currituck residents are the ones who fill our shelter and mainly it's our people who empty it. Contrary to what I've heard, Ginger doesn't fill the animal shelter. The people and their animals of Currituck do. I know that our county commissioners receive opinions from many people and that you want to do what's the best for the county. Please keep in mind that those who have studied our animal shelter needs almost daily for years, attended seminars and toured animal shelters across the country for decades and who have devoted their lives to animal welfare without pay, and we have many volunteers, thank goodness, they're the ones who are knowledgeable in this area. From the frequent inquiries that I get in the grocery store and from the more than 2,000 people who signed a petition in support of a new animal shelter and dog park several years ago, which was presented, for those of you who've been on the commissioners' board for quite a while, remember receiving that, I think. There are many people in this county who are delighted to see us moving forward with building an attractive, adequate new shelter and appreciate your vision and support of this project. Now for everybody who's here and everybody who may be watching, come to the shelter and adopt a pet. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes. Next is Casey Seamster.
Good evening. My name is Casey Seamster and I live at 128 Mariners Way in Moayoc in the Rivers Edge Development. I am a resident of Currituck County for almost eight years and all three of my children have started school here. I am a recent pet owner. We just adopted two dogs within the last couple of years. I actually just came here to listen tonight and thought that I was just signing the signing log, so I was not prepared to speak, but that's okay. I would just like to go ahead and back up everything that the people standing up here ahead of me have said, that I am in agreeance with all of that. I think it's wonderful that you all have approved a new shelter and I think it's wonderful that you've taken the time to do the study. My biggest concern personally, as Commissioner McCord can attest, is that having new pets myself, they have gotten out on occasion and I've had to call the dispatch officers to let them know that they've gotten out. Most of the time, they've come back. Couple times, they have not. I've been lucky to meet a lot of nice people in the county that have assisted me with retrieving my animals. And on occasion, they have ended up at the animal shelter through animal control. It would be very nice to see the animal control office and the animal shelter work together more closely in a space that's large enough to house both of them comfortably so that they can communicate better, so that situations that I've been in and also on the opposite end where I've ended up with people's animals and have no way to get ahold of them would make it much easier for the residents. Also, with the facility being new and moderned and more attractive to visitors of the county and residents of the county, it wouldn't have taken someone like myself as long to adopt animals as it would have if, like someone else has said, you know, some people go into the animal shelter and they're a little concerned with the way things look, so then they, you know, question the integrity of who's taking care of the animals and that sort of thing. But that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last person I have signed up. Have I missed anyone? We are going to be having a presentation at our next commissioners' meeting. I think Mr. Scanlon may like to make some comments at this time.
Well, I'll give you a project status report. As the board knows, we put out an RFP for a design-build team to build, to design and build a new shelter. I believe we had seven teams that submitted applications. We had about a six or seven-member scoring team that went through those, including Ms. Sykes, president of the ALAL. We have shortlisted and I believe this week we are getting a presentation by the design-build team that we feel like is probably the best qualified. If they come in and do as well as their package and present, we will be bringing them to you at your next commissioner meeting as a recommendation that we move forward with putting them under contract and moving the project forward. And as part of that presentation at your next meeting, we'll also go over the shelter. There's a lot of conversation, public dialogue about the size, so we certainly will go over that and try to answer the question about why the size is what we're looking to propose and to build and we'll be presenting it to your next meeting.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
I've got a comment. I know, and like I said, everybody in this room, I've, as a patrol deputy for the county for 12, 13 years now, I know the animal control's gotten bigger since I've been employed as a county employee since 2001. And the deputies at nighttime, I mean, 2013, I've caught three dogs that have taken, I mean, we've even now, the new thing, when animal control's not out at night, taken the dogs where the inmates actually wash the car, is a fenced area. We've been keeping dogs overnight there and then animal control comes out in the morning, you know, due to cutbacks and so forth and so on of not, you know, being able to pay somebody overtime to come out, you know, to help take care, you know, so then the next morning, animal control gets them. I just, I have some, I don't know if problems is the word, I just, I feel that the shelter and animal control needs to work together a little bit better and I'm, you know, I'm not calling nobody out or anything like that, but I just, I know there's been some, I don't know if animosity is the word, but I've just heard some, you know, not wanting to share restroom facilities with the animal control. I know it's been stated by multiple people that, you know, they want them to work more and more together and I mean, I think it's, like I said, I'm just one guy and three dogs, I've caught in 2013, that two of them went to the shelter and one of them, I got lucky and found the owner in the parking lot of Food Line. But that's just my comment, that, you know, those two go hand in hand and I think it needs to be kept that way or the relationship needs to be made stronger or so forth.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
As a pet owner that has cried for my pets, wept for my pets, my wife and I don't go on vacation because of our pets. We spent $86 at Petsmart in the Outer Banks today on our pets. The only thing I'd like to say for me personally as a commissioner, we have a tough job here. We have 16,000 voters. We only have a dollar. Our county was $7 million upside down last year, I think. Is that right, Mr. Scanlon? Somewhere in there?
We were upside down when the request came in for the budget.
Okay.
At the end of the year, we were not, I don't want to get it wrong, we weren't $7 million.
Okay, we weren't $7 million, but we had to adjust our budget.
Yes, we did. We had to make $7 million.
By $7 million.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So we only have X number of dollars to spend. And we have had other departments, public safety, have asked us, if you can do this, why can't you do this? We have a tough job up here as elected officials. We get emails that call us small-minded, cold, and all this other stuff from animal lovers. Now, all I can say is this, and I'm speaking for me, but I have a feeling I'm not by myself. Everybody up here has a pet and we want to do everything we can to provide as much as we can the nicest facility. We have to make decisions. Do we want office space and more bathrooms or do we want to have more for the pets? I asked some of you people out here a while ago, more for the pets. So that's what we have to look at. And my father had, used to have a saying, and I'll bet you, everybody in here has said it, because you have $2.5 million, don't let it burn a hole in your pocket. We have to spend other people's money. It's not our money, it's your money. And there's people in Moayoc that have needs. There are people in the lower end of the county. So we have to try to satisfy everybody, but the name-calling and the emails and stuff like that, you know, we're doing the best we can and trust me, everybody up here, I cried, I've never, I cried more when I lost my last golden retriever than when my dad died and he was my hero. I've never wept like that. But the thing of it is, we're doing everything we can, and forgive me for kind of stepping out of bounds here, fellows and ladies, we hear what you're saying, but we have to make a decision. And I don't think that if we can do a better job for less money for the animals, that's, I think that's where I'm going. And I just want you to know, we hear what you're saying, but we have to, we have, there's a lot of things we have to look at. So I apologize for stepping out or wherever, but I'm tired of getting beat over the head and called names and cold-hearted because I don't hear what you're saying on the pets. It doesn't do anybody any good.
Chairman, can I say one more thing?
Ms. Gilbert is next, please.
I just want to thank each one of you that have shown up tonight and support. We, I echo what Mr. Petrie has said also. I've spoke to a lot of you all about the shelter. I've been out and volunteered and that's the biggest point that I want to make. I want to let each one of you know that I appreciate and each one of us appreciate your volunteerism and the dollars that you spend towards this effort. You know, I personally, both monetary and volunteer with the animal shelter and some events and things like that. Ginger works tirelessly, so, you know, I just thank each one of you. And like I said, we do have a difficult decision to make. When the phone calls come in about one issue, another phone call comes in about another issue. So it is a challenge for us, but we do appreciate you all showing your support and taking time out of your personal lives to come in here tonight and speak and just be in support or, you know, if you're not supportive and you're afraid to speak, that's okay too because we've had both sides of the coins. But thank you.
Mr. Martin.
Yes, Mr. Scanlon. Has the shelter been put on a list? And as PJ just mentioned, it has been eight years since this plan had started to, as a capital plan, to where we were going to build a shelter in this county. And at, four years ago, we started listing it. And I think as Ms. Sykes has so often questioned, when are you going to build the shelter? We need to build to the future, folks, and that's where we need to go. I think that the $2.5 million that has been budgeted for the project would build a 10,000 square foot shelter with no problem. As a matter of fact, it would probably build to 13-plus if I'm not, I would believe that's correct, Mr. Scanlon, is that true? That's what we've budgeted for the projected cost.
We budgeted $2.5 and the design team has submitted a project that would be at that amount and it's about a 10,000 square foot building.
But that's not the shelter. That also includes animal control.
It's the entire facility.
That's right. And that takes 3,000 square feet out of the shelter or the actual...
Roughly, yes.
Okay. Well, anyway, that's my concern. And sitting here, I too am a pet owner and the, I think we ought to build to the future. The concern of our constituents are there. You've seen an outpouring of a lot of hearts here tonight and I appreciate that. And as we go forward, I think we ought to look at that. We ought to look and say, 20 years down the road, I think the gentleman in Coinjock said, we need to look at that. Where are we going to be? Are we going to add on to that? We've got schools that you can add on to in this county with trailers sitting around them because the construction costs after we have completed those buildings have been much, much too expensive, so we resort to trailers. And, you know, all of us, and Mr. Petrie is right when he said it's tough setting here, we will do the absolute best. My heart is with the animals and... My heart is with the animals, and I think we ought to build to the future, and because we are growing, and we will really grow, we're going to approve, you know, many, many developments in this county. And there's 10,000 lots right now in this county that can be built on. And, but please, thank you all for coming. Those are my comments.
Does he have something else? Before we close the public hearing, and it's obvious, everybody knows more about it than I do, because we haven't seen the plans for the shelter. We haven't seen the square footage for the shelter. We don't know how big the shelter is. We haven't seen the cost. We hired professionals to design it, and they designed it. We hired the gentleman that Ms. Sykes asked us to hire to do the research, and he used the up-to-date census numbers, and we have designed a shelter based on looking into the future. And I believe, Mr. Scanlon, have you shown anything to any of the commissioners?
I have not.
So for us to speculate that it's too big, too small, or just right, like that porridge, we just don't know yet because we haven't seen it. So I would submit, everyone needs to wait until the next commissioners' meeting. It'll be out here for everyone to see. The methodology will be explained at that time. The cost of, there's more to it than just building a shelter, there's costs associated with the land that has to be cleared, parking, and so there's a whole lot of things more than just saying, well, 10,000 is right, or 8,000, or 13, and none of us on this board have seen that information. And so I can't speak to it until we have our next meeting. How, how large is the current shelter?
Well, if, for, the reason behind the 10,000, first of all, is although there is a draft report that's being quoted, and I believe it has a 13,000 some odd square foot, that was not the final report of the feasibility study. That study was updated for the 2010 census, and those numbers dropped. We needed to have a basis to go out. When we put out the RFP, we needed to have a basis that everybody submitting, submitted something that was comparable. So the way we did that was, we put out there a 10,000 square foot building, which is supported by the feasibility study, as a means of having everybody submit something that can be compared. The building itself is not designed. We're looking at the best approach of how to put the building together. Again, we have shortlisted. That firm will be here this week and doing a presentation. If they meet the expectations, we'll be bringing them to this board for your consideration. At that time, we will start the design process. The building may be bigger, it could be smaller, although they gave us a schematic as part of the RFP submittal, as I told the design, the selection team, I can almost guarantee what they submitted is not what will be built. We will look at it, we'll review it, there's going to be some value engineering done, there's going to be some spaces we're going to want to roof around the building. Again, it could be bigger or smaller. The current facility, if you count the cinder block building and all of the sheds and everything that's out there, I believe, I'm talking off the top of my head, I think it was a little over 5,000, a little under 5,000 square foot of space that was out there.
So that's the actual animal shelter is...
The animal shelter. Now, what we're talking about is, we're talking about, depending on how you want to, the feasibility study came back in and suggested a building of about 10,000, a little over 10,000 square foot. If you go out and double the amount of space that currently exists out there, and then add the existing animal quarantine space, you come back to about 10,000 square foot also. So two different approaches that we've approached it, we came back to a 10,000 square foot, we thought that was reasonable to go out, as again, we need to have a basis so that everybody's submitting, submitted on something that was comparable. Two different approaches, that looking at the adequate size of the building was 10,000 square foot, so we put 10,000 out there.
And, well, I want to say, the reason I bring that up is, the man, we got about nine million emails, and there's no way we can answer all those emails. So the county manager has sent kind of a generic email back to everyone. If you sent one to the county website, he sent one, and it's very vague because he hasn't presented it yet. If you've sent one to me, I've told, I've answered ones personally to me, most of them, and said that I haven't seen it, but it'll be something Currituck will be proud of. I'm not aware of any building Currituck's built that we're ashamed of. I don't think anybody could name one. And this building will be something everyone will be proud of, and it will take care of the animals with modern technology. It'll be a nice building, and I personally have gone and toured some other animal shelters. I have a pet from the animal shelter, my cat that likes to lay on me at night. So all of us have animals and love animals as well, and you'll be proud of what we build. It's not going to be something that you're not, that you'll be ashamed of, I can promise you that. So, anyone else, Mr. Scanlon?
How big is the current, the animal control building now? 1,000 square foot?
Again, I'll bring the exact measurements to you at the next meeting.
I mean, just ballpark.
But the, for the quarantine shelter?
What we have now on Airport Road, animal control.
Animal control.
Yeah.
Again, off the top of my head, I believe it's about 1,000, 1,200 square foot, something like that, I think is the size of their space.
All right. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing and move to, or public comment, and move to our first public hearing. Item May, well, actually, I'll wait a minute if people, yeah, let's take five minutes. All right. I'd like to call our meeting back to order and go to public hearings, item May, public hearing in action, PB 13-08, Elon Vacations Incorporated, request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 6, required infrastructure, Chapter 10, definitions and measurements, and Chapter 4, use standards to revise existing sewage system requirements for planned development and multifamily developments. With that, Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this is a request for a text amendment, so while it was submitted by Elon Vacations, it is not specific to that property. So this is more of a broader amendment to the UDO. And I'll try to go through this, it's somewhat complicated, but basically, for planned developments and multifamily, our ordinance has sewage disposal standards that require, and I'm going to say it, a packaged tertiary treatment plant. And what that basically means, that when you do these planned developments, which are mixed-use projects or even multifamily, that they need to be serviced by a packaged plant or a treatment plant that provides tertiary treatment. So tertiary is the key word in this, I think. When this submittal was, came before us for Elon Vacations, I think that staff had some discussion on what exactly packaged treatment plant meant. And Elon Vacations is not our first planned development, as we discussed earlier tonight, but it is a smaller one. So initially, we wondered if that didn't mean a centralized wastewater treatment plant like you would see over on the beach at Elon Vacat, or not Elon, but at like Ocean Sands or Monterey Shores or Crawley. So we wanted to work with Elon, staff did on this text amendment, to provide some flexibility on how wastewater can be treated for these smaller planned developments. So what, what this basically says is, it's went in there and said that generally, if you do a planned development or multifamily, you've got to do a centralized wastewater system, is what I think we all think of as one big plant that services the whole area. However, the county engineer, which is basically the technical staff, can provide or allow an alternative wastewater system if certain conditions are met. So what this amendment does, it allows a little bit of flexibility with the type of treatment you do, i.e. centralized versus decentralized, but it still keeps basic standards in place. So whether, whether the planned development does a large, as we think of centralized system, or what I would call these little small treatment systems, they still have to provide, you know, maintenance standards and operation plan. We want to make sure that the wastewater is treated properly and the system is maintained. And most importantly, they still have to provide tertiary treatment. Tertiary means it's the highest level of treatment for wastewater. So whenever the wastewater is treated and it's released or disposed of or dispersed of, it's at a level that's fairly clean, all things being relative. Now, one thing I want to point out to the board is what this amendment does say, is it says the first 3,000 gallons of wastewater flow, that's a pretty small amount, that can be done as a conventional wastewater system. So when you do your first phase, or maybe your first couple houses, or in this case, your first commercial build, you're able to do a small kind of conventional wastewater system. But as the, as the planned development grows and gets bigger, and once the wastewater flows accumulatively greater than 3,000 gallons per day, it then moves into the tertiary treatment. So what I'm basically saying is, this amendment allows a little flexibility at the start of one of these developments, but eventually, it puts everybody back into the requirement for tertiary treatment, which is a higher standard of treatment, which is what the ordinance has always required. So effect, and additionally, staff went in, as, while we were looking at this and tried to clean up some of the language, there was a lot of inconsistency in terms in this section, and some things weren't defined. So overall, I think we were able to work to clean this section up. From staff's perspective, we think this is a good text amendment for the UDO. We think it allows a little more flexibility for some of the smaller planned developments, but at the same time, we feel like it maintains a standard of quality that's appropriate for development. So we do recommend approval of this, staff does. The planning board heard this text amendment at their June 11 meeting, and they also recommended unanimous approval. And with that, I can answer any questions you have.
Questions?
Mr. Woody, I have a question for you. As far as the amount or the lot number, is this applied to under 50 lots? How would, how would that criteria be met? I mean, it states in here the 360 gallons per day per lot, the 3,000 that you just mentioned, what's the capacity, what's, what does this apply to? Any number or amount?
Pleasant anything. So anything within, when any use within, when any use within the planned development is permitted, it'll have a wastewater flow. So we know, for example, for a house, it's 120 gallons per bedroom, there's an equivalent for a commercial. Once that cumulative flow gets to 3,000 gallons per day, it then is required to provide tertiary treatment. So the way we kick it into the higher standard of treatment or the higher quality is a flow number, as opposed to a number of units. And again, the flow number is decided by the actual member, because this, this is just an amendment, but you still have to get this permitted, not just by the county, but by the state and the local health department, and they help determine the flow numbers. I don't know if I answered your question.
Okay, so in layman's terms, how many homes are...
It's how many bedrooms are in the home. Three-bedroom houses, 360 gallons per day, so that's 10 three-bedroom houses that can be built, after which you then kicked into the tertiary treatment.
Okay, so approximately 10 homes, and then it would be at that capacity?
And of course, if you add in commercial uses or other uses that contribute, it may be less than 10 homes to get into that capacity.
Okay.
So this is a way of not having to do it up front, but eventually, you will have to do it?
It does. It gives a little bit of flexibility on the front end, which I think is, is useful for smaller, smaller projects. Now, if you have a project that's going to come in and do 600 units, like Currituck Reserve, they're going to do a centralized system, and I think we wouldn't expect anything less for something that large.
Okay. Questions, other questions?
How many total acres for this Elon project are they looking to?
The Elon project's 26 acres.
So this wastewater, whatever they do with the wastewater, well, they've got 20, 20, how many?
26 acres.
26 acres to deal with the affluent?
Yes. And they're required to have open space as part of the PUD, and the open space is a natural location for disposal of affluent.
But they've got 26 acres to play with?
They do. Yeah, yes.
What's, does that include the, their office building and everything too, under that 26 acres?
It does. Which, again, I'll just, I'll say that's related more to the next agenda item, but in terms of providing wastewater, Elon will have to do that as anybody else would, which I think as most PUDs can do, you can comfortably do that within the open space.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'll just state my concerns one more time. I think you answered them, Mr. Woody, in the work session we had earlier. And my concerns just specifically are maintenance to the system, and then cost downstream later on, even when the system outlives its lifetime capacity, and I think you answered those, so thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'll just follow up for those that weren't at the work session, and we had talked and brought up, as Commissioner Vance had, one of the things that I asked was that, to make sure that if we adopt this ordinance, that we're getting something as good or better than we originally had, and that there would be safeguards and provisions inculcated in this text amendment adoption that would ensure enforcement and compliance in the future.
And there is a requirement for an operation and maintenance plan. We make the engineer initially provide us, the staff, the information to know how it's going to be maintained, what it requires to maintain. But also, on the back end, the county has the ability to create water and sewer districts, where through the creation of one of those districts, if there was a failure of wastewater systems, you could then basically tax the users or the people that use that system to pay for any needed improvement. So there is ability to create water and sewer districts.
Yes, sir.
And if I might add additionally, I know we're talking about this in the context of Elon, but actually, what my concerns were, inasmuch as this text amendment will affect the entirety of the county, I'm speaking to the compliance and the, down the stream, as Commissioner Vance was, in conjunction or with the entirety of the county, whether, whatever development may come up in the future. And sometimes we lose sight looking myopically at the short sight. We have to look for the entirety of the county and how this text amendment changes things going forward for people in Moayok, as well as people in Knott's Island and elsewhere in the county. And that was my concern.
That's correct.
I think one thing to remember is, as Mr. Woody was talking about, the special district in the event of a system failure. As an example, in Eagle Creek, they have their own wastewater system. If that system failed, the county would go in, create the district. I don't think there's an underlying district in that one currently, is there?
There is.
There is? Okay. County would go in, assess the property owners, and fix the system, very much like what's happening with Ocean Sands. That system is in need of repair, and I think it'll, at some point, will be replaced, and the property owners within that PUD will be paying in the entirety of the upgrade. So no one else that is not a user would ever pay for that. Anyone else?
Well, as I say, that, it happened in Eagle Creek, when the golf course shut down, because somebody had to pump the affluent. The bank had to hire somebody to physically contract and pump the affluent.
Yeah. All right. I'm going to open the public hearing. I had three people signed up, Emmett McMillan, Tom Watkins, and Bretta Lee.
Bret Bailey.
Bret?
Bailey.
Bailey?
A.
Bret? Oh, okay, I apologize.
Close enough.
I can slaughter a name.
Come up there.
Okay, I appreciate it. It was real, the A was real close.
My doctor handwriting.
Okay, write me a prescription for you, Lee. First person we have is Emmett McMillan. Ask you, please state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name's Emmett McMillan. I'm at 132 Anas Way in Grandy. I just recently purchased the 10 acres that directly adjoins this property. When we put this property under contract, you know, we were well aware that, you know, the other property was in general business, you know? We're moving out of development, you know, we're not looking for 39 neighbors. I was never available to the knowledge what was going on until I saw a public hearing notice come up. I understand the man's, you know, I heard all the rumors. So I went and sat down with the crew from Elon. They were very upfront with me, and I was very upfront with him with my concerns. You're talking about a couple properties that don't drain very well to begin with.
Sir, we're discussing the Unified Development Ordinance change, not the project. You signed up for the ordinance change. Would you like, wish to speak at the next item?
I guess.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's okay.
My first time.
That's okay.
I'll sit down.
How about Tom? Did you want to speak to the ordinance change or to the proposed development?
Proposed development.
And Bret?
Is what I'll guess, proposed development.
Okay. I have no one signed up for the proposed ordinance change. Is there anyone that wishes to speak that did not sign up? Yes, sir. I ask you both to please state your name and affiliation or address for the record.
My name's Victor White with Landmark Engineering, and I'm the, Elon is my, my client. My name's Victor White with Landmark Engineering, and I'm the, Elon is my, my client. I'm the engineer that submitted the text amendment on his behalf. I think that, I just wanted to say, I think that Ben had covered it very well. I think that originally, when we had talked about the text amendment, the way the wording was in the, in the ordinance that was carried over from the old ordinance, it spoke more package treatment plant, which is typically associated with the division of water quality. Now you have much smaller, it can, you have much smaller, the ability to have that tertiary level treatment with much smaller flows, and that typically would be done through the onsite wastewater, which would be the health department. And I know that there are some concerns about perk tests and also maintenance. That is something that would have, have to be addressed regardless of, of, you know, the county and the text amendment as part of the permit conditions. The higher level of treatment that you're going with, the more maintenance, the more monitoring, the more testing that goes on as conditions of the permit from the state, whether that's the division of water quality or the onsite wastewater section. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that haven't been answered by Ben.
Does anyone have any questions of the applicant?
I, I do.
Yes, sir.
Hypothetical. Two years down the road, you have a failure. Who's responsible to take care of it?
As part of the permit conditions, you are required to design, say that the drain field was to fail. You're required, saying that this was designed under onsite wastewater, you're, you're required as part of the design and approval process to have 100% repair area for, for that. One of the main, and this goes into when you get your perk tests and every, everything like that, that's going to determine how much it's hydraulically loaded, so you don't have a hydraulic failure. The other main reason for drain field failures are solids and oils, oils and grease, and that's one of the benefits of a tertiary level. It's treated to a much higher level. There's much less oil and grease, suspended solids and all that. And those are conditions in the permit levels that are written in the permit from the state. And there are typically samples that are pulled and sent to a laboratory for analysis. And it's monitored enough so the operator will, will see if something is, is not going as it should and be able to address that before you have a failure. The other thing is, anytime you're dealing with, with larger systems, the state typically makes you use duplex systems. And what I mean by that is, if you have a, a pump tank, you, you're required to have multiple pumps, dual pumps in there. The reason being, if one failed, you, you still have the ability to operate until that's, that gets replaced. And I hope that answered your question.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve PB 13-08 as presented due to its consistency with the 2006 land use plan and that the request is reasonable and in the public interest.
And I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and duly seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. Item B, public hearing in action, PB 1307, Elon Vacations Incorporated, request to rezone from general business to planned development mix PD-M located at 138 West Mobile, West Mobile Road, Harbinger, Tax Map 131, Parcels 95A and 97, Poplar Branch Township. Mr. Woody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You can see the, the subject property on the aerial photograph on your screen. It is at the corner of Currituck Highway and Mobile Road on the south end of the county. Currently, the tract of land is vacant except for a wireless communication tower that's located there. One important note in this is the property is currently zoned general business, which typically allows commercial-type uses, some very, very limited warehousing uses, and allows single-family dwellings as well. To the north, to the south, and to the east, you see additional GB property, which is common for the lower end of the county. The GB tends to follow the corridor. And then, of course, to the, to the west, you see agricultural zoning, which is characterized by, by kind of low-density residential and some typically farming operations or active agriculture. Land use plan is, is one thing I want to touch on for a minute, because I think the land use plan is the, much of the basis for the staff's recommendation tonight, the technical review committee's recommendation. Our land use plan was done in 2006, and it designates this area's limited service. So what that means is, it wouldn't be necessarily your most intense development, which you'll see that in areas like Grandy, you know, up in Moayok, areas where there really is a lot of infrastructure and services available. But in this area of the county, there'll, there'll be development that kind of corresponds to, to the level and the amount of services that are available. So, in other words, limited service, it's not the most dense development, but you're going to see development in those areas in the county. It's not rural or conservation. Another thing is, there's a number of policies that the land use plan puts forward that, that work or at play with this development request you see tonight. One is, is that Currituck County encourages development appropriate for the location. Our land use plan actually establishes density ranges, limited service is 1.5 units per acre, for example, and full service is three. Another thing I'll say is that, is that the county look for, there's policy support for diversity in housing types. That could be townhomes, that could be condominiums, it could be manufactured housing. There's a lot of different types of housing that can exist in the county, and our land use plan supports a mix of housing types that are appropriate for the location. Mixed-use developments, that's the idea of having the ability to do residential and non-residential in one piece of property. Our land use plan supports that, that's a policy. And finally, encouraging the expansion of our existing businesses where we can. And again, this is primarily driven, I believe, by, by the expansion of Elon Vacations. So there is a number of policies that do support this request, and I just wanted to put that on the record so the board understands the staff's position and where it kind of originates from. This is the site plan you can see before you. As, as part of a planned development, the developer is required to give us a few pieces of information, because it is a rezoning. This, this is a rezoning request. Number one is, is they have to provide a master plan. The master plan conceptually shows the types of densities, the types of uses, gives you a general indication of, of what this thing's going to look like, not necessarily site plan details, but the types of uses. What can we expect to see in the future? In this particular case, they have detailed out the master plan to show phases one and two, and they left the additional phases available for future commercial. And one of the phases is available for commercial or residential, and I'll get into that more in a second. The other thing you get submitted with one of these requests of planned development is you get what's called a terms and conditions document. So they've, in addition to showing a master plan, the applicant has to outline kind of the terms and conditions, what their build-out's going to look like, square footages, densities, mix of uses, all that stuff's in a document that's in your agenda packet. And then finally, the last tool that, that exists through this process is the ability to add additional zoning conditions. So if the master plan and the terms and conditions aren't quite the information you need, the board or the staff has the ability to recommend additional conditions of approval, provided the applicant agrees to those. And of course, if the applicant doesn't agree, you don't have to approve the request. In this particular case, you can see the basic road alignment, some of the uses. I'll note that, that what this document, what this rezoning request does is it, it provides for 39 multifamily units. The 39 is, if you take 26 acres, divide it by 39, you get 1.5 units per acre. So that's basically the density that the land use plan allows. That, that's for 39. It's not a magic number. It comes from the density that's prescribed by the land use plan. It has about 11.76 acres of commercial. So that's in, as they've set aside across the front, it's about 11 acres or so, almost 12 of, of commercial, which is consistent. It's zoned GB now, so that's really not much of a big change necessarily. And then in the back, in the phase, I believe it's in the upper left-hand corner, you see that phase is reserved as commercial slash residential. Now, I'll say that right now, there couldn't be an expansion residential there because the land use plan doesn't allow it. If the county ever modified its plans to allow higher density, higher densities or something, then that could come into play. There's been a lot of discussion about that. One thing the board could consider tonight is you could add a condition that says, if that is ever to be used for anything other than commercial, it can come back before you for approval. So you have a little flexibility on those open-ended phases. And then, of course, this also is required to have 20% open space, and it's got a couple of acres that are used for roads. And that, that basically totals up your 26 acres. A community meeting was held for this on February 25th of 2013. There was a, a summary of the meeting in your agenda packet. I think a lot of those issues were developed, or a lot of the issues or concerns were identified at the community meeting, and you're probably going to hear some of those again tonight as, through the public hearing process. There's, there's review standards in your, in your case analysis that there's basically 11 items that you're supposed to use in reviewing this case and deciding whether to approve or deny the rezoning. It's a legislative proceeding, so really, you have a lot of discretion in how you manage this. You are required to make, to find if it's consistent with the plan or not, and if it's compatible with surrounding areas. The TRC or the technical staff has reviewed this request. The TRC does recommend conditional approval. However, we were, we are recommending some conditions of approval be added. On the master plan, we've recommended that there be compatibility between building elevations in each phase, so you don't have kind of a smorgasbord of a development, everything kind of flows and has a common-looking theme. We've recommended that the commercial areas provide pedestrian-oriented amenities such as plazas, outdoor seating. We found that the commercial businesses that are successful in Currituck tend to have shaded outdoor areas. A cotton gin's a good example. Even Elon Vacations now has some area where you can get out of the car and kind of stretch your legs, so we're asking for that. And then finally, staff is also recommending that the multifamily, the 39 multifamily units, that, that by the time 19, by the time 50% of the units receive, or 19, almost 50%, receive a, a certificate of a compliance, that at that point, before any additional units are built, the full amenity package is constructed. So we've basically created a phasing schedule where you'd have to build the amenities at the time 50% of the, the density is completed. So that puts a correlation or a connection between the amenities and the townhome units or the multifamily units. Additionally, staff has recommended the condition for the terms and conditions document, that the utilities and infrastructure be designed and integrated to serve the development as a whole and avoid managing utilities and infrastructure individually. So we're trying to get some common theme or some common approach towards the development of the utilities, and we can work with the developer as site plans come in for that. And then finally, we added a list of kind of typical conditions that would apply to each phase as actual site plans come in, and those are kind of related, I'm not going to read those, but they're related to fire requirements and turnaround requirements and any wetland impacts and things of that nature. The Planning Board heard this request at their June meeting. The Planning Board did recommend denial of the, the denial of the request. At the time, the Planning Board's reasoning for that was due to traffic concerns and also community concerns and construction standards. And of course, you can see more information on that in the Planning Board minutes that were included in your packet. And that concludes my presentation, and I can answer any questions you have.
All right. Questions? Jim? Yes, sir.
The, the address is given as Mobile Road. I think it's...
Yes, and that would just be the, whatever address the GIS system has assigned to the parcel.
Okay, so it's actually on Currituck Highway, it's, it's facing Currituck Highway, but the GIS listed as Mobile Road.
Yeah.
That's not the physical address.
No, I mean, it does have Currituck Highway frontage, and I, and I would presume they would probably prefer to front the highway, especially with the commercial, so.
I just was confused.
I need to add one more thing, too. I forgot. They also submitted elevations for the proposed multifamily units, and I wanted to show those real quickly, and you can see that it shows features such as a pitched roof, dormers, windows, entry porch features. By submitting these elevations, again, this becomes part of the zoning approval, so they'll have to build something similar to this. So I want to say, if a window's placed a little differently, or if a door swaps places, that doesn't matter, but the basic architectural features you see would be a requirement of their multifamily submittal, the elements you see there. So I forgot to mention that.
Anyone else? Yes, sir, Mr. Riedler.
The, the phases you were speaking of, they are listed as commercial slash residential.
One of, one of them is, yes.
One of them you were talking about.
Yeah.
Okay, if we accept that as, for the record, what type of vested right does that give for residential building on that particular lot? You're saying, on the other hand, that it's not allowed now.
If you, if you approve this plan with a phase 2B that says commercial slash residential, they would have the option of doing commercial there or residential in the future. Now, if you want to have some sort of control over that, I would recommend that on that phase 2B, you require that if they do decide to proceed with residential, it be, it come back to the board for an approval.
Maybe I misunderstood you. I thought you said, under the land use plan, as it's currently written, residential would not be allowed there.
Under the current land use plan, they have, as a limited service designation, they have maxed their density out.
Okay.
But they left that area open in case the county ever does change your land use plan, or if something changes down the road, they would have that flexibility.
Nothing changes down the road.
If nothing changes, then, then this is done with residential. You have to plant...
We accepted, if we accept it as such...
Yeah.
Does that not give them some vested right for residential?
It does, it does not.
Okay, thank you.
Not, you, you have to put a condition on it, though, to establish that.
I thought vesting happened at preliminary sketch, so I don't...
By virtue of a...
Zoning doesn't give you any vesting.
This isn't a slight specific development plan.
No, it's not, but it's a zoning district, a conditional zoning, basically, you're, you're establishing the range of uses that would be allowed on the property.
But if the land use plan doesn't allow for it, and we don't allow for it, that cannot happen.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, that's what you...
That's what I was getting at.
Okay. I had Mr. Griggs.
And again, just, just to clarify, because we've been talking a little bit of technical stuff, as of tonight, looking at this plan, 39 houses or dwellings would be the maximum unless further action was taken, i.e. either a change in the land use plan, and if we make as part of the conditional acceptance of this, that the applicant come back to the board, we can then revisit any expansion or, or any additional homes that may come. In other words, what we do tonight will limit it to 39 houses unless there is a...
Really, two changes have to occur for it to go...
Two changes.
Yes. If you add the condition, that is correct.
Okay, because there was some concern that this was going to be 100 houses or whatever. So I'm just trying to clarify that, right now, the ceiling is, unless there's a change to the land plan use, and if we make a condition, they come back and the board revisit it and allow it.
That is correctly stated.
Okay. Yes, sir?
I'm old, and I'm sticking to it. I want to make sure that this thing doesn't, what Commissioner Riggs talked about, or Griggs talked about a while ago, when he referred to where somebody starts out here, and then, oops, I want to change it down the road. And I, I don't want to use bait and switch, but I think that's what you talked about. A lot of people have concerns about this, so I want to make sure that I understand. We're starting out with 39 units, period, unless, if somebody, if he wanted to expand that, he would have to come back and change the land use plan, and the Board of Commissioners would have to approve it.
If, yes, the land use plan is indefinite, and the Board of Commissioners would approve it, provided you add the zoning condition, that, that you are an approval authority for that phase.
But we're going to put that in the stipulation as part of the agreement...
As part of your approval tonight.
If we pass this tonight.
Yes. You have that option to do that.
Does that answer your question, because, you know, because I'm kind of following you?
Okay, I know, and that's why I was trying to clarify, and if I might...
Yes, sir.
Again, you know, I'll ask indulgence of my fellow commissioners, for those of you that were not here for the work session, one of the things I spoke about was, in the past, the county has had site plans that were presented by applicants that, in their initial presentation, reflected amenities and a quality of structure that was pleasing, and the Board of Commissioners, as it... And the Board of Commissioners, as my understanding is, in some cases, approved those rezoning requests only to have later the developer come back and say, oops, changed my mind, and I really don't want to do the amenities, or I really don't want to build a 2,000 square foot house. I want to put something of lesser quality or whatever. And I did, I referred to it earlier, as kind of a bait and switch. One of the things that I spoke at the last meeting, and again at the workshop, is I'd like to see personally, as a commissioner going forward, more utilization of conditional rezoning whereby the commissioners can ensure that plans that are submitted to the board are what we end up with. Now, to my understanding, any of the conditions that we've proffered thus far in this matter have been willingly accepted by the applicant. But again, I would like to see this going forward. And what it does, it gives us some surety that we're going to get what we see, and it's going to give the neighbors some resulting surety as well going forward. So just to clarify that for the conditional rezoning.
Yes, sir.
I notice as a condition, I notice if you look at the satellite photo, there's a lot of trees in the back part. As part of a condition, and to protect the neighbor, can part of the condition be to have a buffer of some of those trees?
Yes, you can request that as a condition of approval. Now, again, the applicant has to accept that, but we can have them address that.
Okay, I'm just...
Yeah, it is feasible, yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
One additional thing. In looking at this, Mr. Woody, it appears that there's two additional means of accessing 158 other than the existing road that is now Harbor or Mobile Lane. Is that correct? And what are their proximities vis-à-vis the curve that is to the south?
The first access, yeah, there's one access proposed to Mobile, and there's two access points that connect to the Kerituck Highway, which in some ways, you can look at it as if this were subdivided off into one acre lots, you would have all those little curb cuts. But what this does, on the frontage at least, it manages the access through two points, which is good. The less points you manage it through, the better. The first access point closest to Mobile is, it's more than 1,000 feet. It is... Victor, I'm not seeing the measurement on it, but 700, 800 feet, maybe? Looks like about 750 feet from Mobile Road, and the second access is probably, you know, similar distance from that. So they're spaced, and the point is they're spaced in a manner that meets the requirements of the county's ordinance, but also, one thing to keep in mind is, at such points, they go to build this, they'll have to go to NCDOT and get driveway permits, and they'll also have to get permission from the Department of Transportation to build those access points there as well.
Okay, because one of the things that I know will come up, because I live in that district, lived down in that area, is that is a relatively precarious stretch of road. I think we've had two fatalities there within the last, I think.
I almost said homicides.
About work, weren't you?
Yeah, fatal, going back to the old days. Had two fatalities there as well as some wrecks. So it's, there are some traffic issues there. But I think, as you said, we're, the North Carolina Department of Transportation will be required to assess that. They're engineers, is that correct?
That is correct. They'll have to get approval from DOT before they can actually construct any of these accesses.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Woody, the amenities that will be built after the 19th apartment is put in, what happens if at 19, they decide they don't want to put in the amenities? What happens then?
Then you would have 19 dwelling units without amenities, and that would be the end, that'd basically be the end of the residential development.
Well, I was just wondering, could we not, you know, make that a requirement? If they are going to do something like that, then the amenities should be constructed at the same time the apartments are?
You could, as part of conditional zoning, you could ask the applicant if they're willing to phase in the amenities sooner than 19 units. That is an appropriate condition to place, provided they agree with it.
I mean, from what I've heard and read, it seems that that isn't a traction there for the rental of those units. And they would be adding amenities there so they could fill them up. And without them, I don't see that they would have a good shot at, you know, drawing the clientele. So just wondering.
Just as a point of clarification, is when are the amenities supposed to be completed? After 19 or by 19? By the completion of 19?
Read it carefully into the, the multifamily amenities package is completed, started, completed by the time 50% of the townhome units, 19 units, receive certificates of compliance, which is an occupancy permit from the building inspector.
So by the time they reach the 19-unit completion, the amenities will be 100% completed?
Yes.
As it is now?
Yes.
As written. So it wouldn't be after 19, and they start, it would be before 19.
Can I ask a question? Mr. Woody, why are we requiring access onto Mobile Road? Why can't you just stub that and take away some of the concerns about the traffic coming out onto Mobile Road? You just stub it there at the edge of Mobile Road? And, I mean, unless that's something that everybody wants, but I think some of the concerns we have is the curve there at Mobile Road. If you've got two accesses, one of them's 800 foot from Mobile Road, and then the other one's probably another 600 foot from there going north, it would seem to me those would be much safer ingress and egress. And I can't imagine anybody inside wanting to come out on Mobile Road. If you've got an access that's not in a curve, why would we require an access coming out on Mobile Road?
This isn't going to be the popular answer, but the reason is, is you can give people alternative ways to get places without getting on the highway. So you could actually get to the Exxon gas station without getting on the highway. It's not popular, but it's true. It works in Grandy. There's ways you can get from subdivisions to retail locations without getting on the highway. The other thing is, it provides increased emergency vehicle access, too, in the event there's a closure at one of the access points. More ways in and out is generally preferred by our service providers.
Well, I don't know what the feeling is in lower Currituck now, but years ago, we talked about interconnectivity on the roads down there, and the folks nearby run us out of county. They didn't want interconnectivity down the lower end of the county because they were afraid that that would divert the traffic off of the main highway, and then very much like you do at Idlet, you turn at Idlet and you come out at Grandy. Or, you know, Tules Creek, and you turn down Tules Creek Road and come out at Moayok. And that was one of the concerns. I know Mr. Scanlon remembers that. That was one of the things. I believe it was Mr. Miller was talking to us about interconnectivity of the highways, and we discussed that, and can hear from the reaction there. They did not want it, and I don't think that's changed. So I'm just reflecting some of...
And I would note where the interconnectivity does exist. It tends to work, and we've had subdivisions of Moayok that don't have interconnectivity and now want it. So I would just carefully consider interconnectivity and how it's used in the county. But ultimately, the board, you've got a plan in front of you. You have some flexibility.
But I mean, it's not an absolute requirement. Now, the developer may want it. I can't...
No, it's close to an absolute requirement.
It's close?
Yeah.
How close? That close? This close?
I think it's required, staff requires it, but I reflect in the context of this hearing that you could probably provide flexibility as the elected body.
Okay. All right. Any other, yes, sir?
In regards to quality of the dwellings that are going to be built, is there anything that we can do tonight to ensure from square footage? I know we're not looking at a preliminary plat or nothing like that. We're looking at a big picture deal. The quality is always a concern for me that we, I've read what the proposals are. I've seen square footage, and I've seen that type of stuff, and the quality. I just wanted to make sure that what we have seen is kind of what we get.
I think in terms of the elevations that you have, those can have some binding effect. I would defer to the county attorney. I'm not sure you can specify minimum square footages through zoning, but you might have some flexibility in terms of requiring roof pitches or maybe materials, entry features.
I think Mr. Woody's correct. I just couldn't say, be aware, the General Assembly's about ready to take away local government authority to regulate the aesthetics of structures in any event, but that's what's heading our way, so you're going to lose that control.
If it's in place before then, is it retroactive?
That's not clear. In fact, there's some...
There's a debate.
There's a bill that's just been adopted that is not clear that whether it, because it's so badly worded, whether it's going to repeal all pre-existing ordinances that it relates to, or whether it's going to be prospective.
I know ex post facto is a term you normally hear when you're talking about criminal law, but, I mean, can they pass a law that makes things that were done prior to the existence of that law then, because you can't do that criminally.
Sure, particularly as it relates to local government. You know, local government only exists because the General Assembly says it can.
That is correct.
I guess that answers that.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Let's keep on going.
Yeah, I mean, it's one of my concerns specifically, that what we see is what we get. And that's, you know, the rezoning, to me, hinges on what the quality of the product is going to be placed in the community. I mean, so there's where I'm trying to come from. And I've asked this question now for two weeks, and I'm still asking it again tonight. So anyhow, with that, I'll ask you.
Who's next?
Well, again, then, to flesh that out, part of conditional zoning, what latitude do we have? I mean, I don't think the applicant has any interest in building anything but a quality location, but the question is there. And this isn't to cast any aspersions on what we think he might or might not do, but it goes back to my concern, that, and as echoed by Commissioner Idlet, that we get what we see. I mean, it's his plan, so again, what parameters do we have relative to getting what is presented to us?
I think through conditional zoning or through this zoning process, you have the ability to control densities, to control intensities, to control the types of uses. I think you can control elevation features, materials, roof pitches, amenities, phasing, all the things we've discussed, I think you have the ability to lock down on through this zoning process. Where I think that you probably don't, and again, I'll ask Ike to correct me if I'm wrong, is setting minimum square footages for, I think that probably would violate the federal fair housing law. I'm not sure that you can set the type or standards on the types of people that can be in someplace either, but I do think in terms of the physical form of the building and the density and intensity, I think that's fair game in a zoning case.
Let me just ask one more question, and maybe I'm delaying this thing at some, maybe this is not the right time to do what I'm looking to do. We will have an opportunity at a later date, when a preliminary plat comes in, to do just exactly what I'm talking about. Is that correct? To approve or disapprove the...
You will not.
I will not.
If there's no preliminary plat required, it won't come back before the Board of Commissioners, and there may not be. If you want to see every phase of a PUD, then you need to add a condition to this zoning approval that you see every phase of the PUD.
Well, you'll see it, correct?
Staff will see it, and staff will apply the ordinances that have been adopted by the Board of Commissioners for these types of developments. So there is a technical review that occurs.
Answer my question, that's fine. Thank you.
Who's next? I do have one question, Mr. Woody, and then we'll move on. I asked it earlier in the work session. At one time, the previous owner was proposing to build a hotel on this site, is that correct?
I have heard that before, yes.
And that is, under the current zoning, a hotel could be built, correct?
That is correct.
And I believe up to five stories? Is that correct?
I don't know about that. I mean, we have, maybe four. We have height limits and things, and it depends if they sprinkle. I don't know about five, but maybe four.
Okay, let's say you build four stories with 50 units per floor. That's 200 hotel rooms, correct?
Yes, they could do that under current ordinance. We allow hotels and GB zoning.
That could happen right now with nothing else being done.
There's 4,000 acres of undeveloped GB in the county. There's a lot of opportunity for hotels, so yes.
Okay, so we're looking at 39 units versus possibly however many possible units. I think that's something also, that if you're talking about the intensity of cars, it'd be a big difference in intensity of cars and traffic versus a hotel versus what's being proposed. And with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. I'm going to let Mr. McMillan come again.
All right, as I stated before, I'm Emmett McMillan. I'm at 132 Anna's Way in Grandy. I just recently purchased the 10 acres that directly adjoin all 39 units. When we put this property under contract, we were completely under the understanding this was zone general business. We were ready for Home Depot, or, you know, whatever. When I started hearing all the rumors, I went and sat down with the Alon people. He was very forthcoming with what he was doing. I was very forthcoming with my concerns. We're moving out of a residential neighborhood to get away from residential neighborhood. I didn't buy this place to have 39 neighbors. We have livestock. They stink. I mean, they're livestock, you know? I see too many times where we keep our animals right now. The people cleared out the trees. Well, guess what? They went to the health department, and guess what? The same manor pile that's been there for 15 years, they had to move it, you know? Outside of my personal opinions, I have a lot of legitimate concerns. Number one is the traffic. Everybody around here knows that travels on that road. You know, getting out onto the highway from Mobile is a huge issue. Whenever you're going to have traffic coming from the north or coming from the south to the north and trying to get over into that turning lane to turn into this, you know, this development and stuff, I mean, you're going to have a nightmare. You're going to have more head-on collisions with people turning out of Mobile Road trying to go north, and all of a sudden, the car's coming over into the turning lane. My main issue on my property is neither one of these properties drain very well. When we bought the property, I was still completely ready to do the drainage, fix the drainage issues that I have. But I'm around Corolla a bunch, and I see all the new specs and, you know, all the new height restrictions, you know, as far as sand, septics. I don't want to be that old house in Corolla that's flooded now because you raise this stuff. I mean, you're raising them for legitimate reasons. But what about the outside effects? I don't see any perimeter ditching on here. I hear about one pond being ducked. I'm going to dig a pond, too. I know what the water table is there. I'm lucky to get three or four feet. We get a five-inch rain, that fills everything. I mean, you concrete all this stuff, you put your commercial buildings up, we have water issues. I mean, what's going to happen when we get a hurricane? We'll get eight inches of rain. Who's going to be stuck fitting the bill? Me, you know? I got one other neighbor that's going to be directly up against this stuff. I just think you really need to consider this. I understand that, you know, Currituck needs development. I understand there's a need for certain things, but there's a lot of unclear facts here. And, you know, Mr. Petrie knows firsthand. Just because an engineer says it's going to drain this way, doesn't mean it's going to. And that's really, I guess, all I have to say, but I just please ask that you be very, very thoughtful about what's going on here.
Where's your property in relation to it?
That, all that cleared area that runs directly...
West of it.
Yeah, that 1,700 and some feet that runs directly west, that's all, man.
Are those trees along your border?
There's some tall pines, and then it breaks into...
Yes.
Yeah. You got some tall trees, and then it breaks, you know, and I've seen, you know, what, you know, supposedly the buffer is supposed to be. It's too small for me to see how close the houses are gonna be, but from what I can tell, they're gonna be right on top of us. You know, two-story houses looking straight down into our property, you know? That's where I plan on building my house. You know, and I, I'm not trying to crush somebody's ideas, or, you know, I mean, I know everybody's trying to make a living, or do what they're gonna do, but, you know, this directly affects my family. You know, we're gonna have 39 families living right up against us. When we bought this property, it was zone general business. We were, like I said, we were ready for Home Depot to come be our neighbor, that's fine, you know? We'll get the back of their building, or the parking lot, you know?
How do you feel about a hotel as a neighbor?
Well, I think it's more needed in this county than what the 39 units are.
Yeah, but they're higher up at four stories, looking down than two stories.
Out at the corner of the property on Carrottoke.
Okay. You know?
How many, what, you said, is it, how, your property, where we pointed out, how big is it again?
10 acres.
10 acres.
You know, if I could just say, and I don't know, this is anecdotal, I don't live that far from you, and maybe someone here that knows more about those, maybe soils can speak about it, but, on my property, I had, I had an area where the water didn't drain well, and I thought it was low, and I had a pond dug there, and what I was told by, and it was TR equipment, what I was told is that area down there, Lower Point Harbor, probably about, I don't even know if I'm a half mile from you, if you go down, I don't know, two or three feet, you hit, I call it gumbo mud. It's a clay type, and it will act like Saran Wrap with mashed potatoes will be the soil on top of it, you pour gravy, and it stays there.
Stays there.
When I had my pond dug, that was 12 years ago, I have never had any standing water, because it pierced that. Now, I'm not saying, and I don't want you to...
I've had Almaral Health come out, do a perk test, we pulled perks on, I think, five spots on that property, and I know what it's gonna cost for me to put in a septic system, and I imagine they're gonna have the same thing. And it's gonna directly drain water, or, I mean, it's gonna happen. I mean, and, I mean, if you decide to approve it, you know, that's up to you guys, but, you know, I figured I had to come up here and at least tell you so that when and if it does happen, I can come back and say, "I told you so."
Mr. McMillan, I have a question for you. You mentioned your livestock, how many livestock do you have corralled, and what location on your property are they?
They're not there right now, we're in the process of moving everything.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Tom Watkins?
Hello, I'm Tom Watkins, I live at 159 West Mobile Road with my wife and six-year-old grandson. And if you, since you've got the aerial here, I'd just like to point out, there's a number of lots just to the south of the proposed development, we're, we're right off the bottom left-hand corner there, and across the street, on our side of the street, those are all single-family residential homes. I guess, I've got a list of concerns here, and, and there's a number of folks from the neighborhood back here supporting me, we're all concerned about our property values, and what this development could do to our property values. Now, I'm speaking specifically about the multifamily or apartments that are being proposed, and, and not the upfront commercial portions of the project. We feel like, or, that whatever is done here, it needs to be set to some standards to help us to uphold our property values, which all of us have seen drop significantly in the last few years. It's possible that if our property values drop any more than they already have, a lot of us will be upside down in our homes, and we all, you know, we all know what that means. I would, I mentioned I'm a general contractor, and, and Mr. Idlet over here had mentioned construction standards. It's difficult for me as a builder to look at that elevation and make any kind of determination as to the quality of the structures that are gonna be built. Those could be anything from hardy plank, nicely-done structures, to vinyl boxes. It's a very generic elevation that was presented to us. For me, it's very difficult to make any kind of decision on what that end product would look like, so we, we have some concerns there. I've also got some landscaping concerns. Most of the landscaping that exists on that property is just scrub pines. There's a back corner that's some tall trees. I noticed in the applicant's proposal, they talk about keeping some of the existing landscaping, that might be a good idea, but, you know, some landscaping requirements would probably be more prudent than keeping what's there. I would invite everyone to go by and look at the property, there are just mostly seven and eight-year-old pines that have sprouted up over there. I just wanna encourage you to have a system, whatever goes in here, a system of checks and balances that helps to protect, you know, all of the, all of the community here as the construction goes on, okay? I wanna address those amenities for a minute, because I don't, I don't quite understand why you couldn't do the amenities right at the initial construction phase of the first 19 units. It doesn't take very long to build a pool or tennis courts, I've done that myself personally, and there's no reason why you couldn't start those when you started the multifamily units, and complete them at the same time that you're completing the, the first building, let's say, and getting your first COs. Those could be completed before you get your first certificate of occupancy. We need to make sure that these guys do what they propose, you know, to do out there. I'd hate to see a number of them get built and then it not work out. We've brought up at a couple of the other meetings, our, you know, the safety concerns about the intersection at West Mobile. That is a dangerous intersection, people have been killed there. The, I believe the initial site plan had an entrance on the West Mobile that was a little further west, and then that, that did get changed to a little further east, and I'm, I'm a little confused about the continuity part of that, and I'm also confused at how it could be a good idea for, for those folks, commercial or residential folks, to go back through the neighborhood there to get to the Exxon station. What I had pushed for was a signalized intersection, but I've come to understand that that would come later in the process. I guess I would say it would be nice if there was some way to ensure that we had a safe intersection there, either at West Mobile, or one of the other, or one of the other entrances. Now, it had been brought up at a meeting that, that the local residents back there would be allowed to use that, that curb cut there on West Mobile, and you could, you could go through the development and then get on Carrottoke Highway where you've got a longer, you know, further field of view. The real problem comes when you're coming out of West Mobile and you try to look to the right towards the post office, you just can't see very far. I can't tell you how many times I've pulled out there, only to have someone coming around the curve about 70 miles an hour, and you gotta stay in the center lane so you don't get mowed over. It's just a very dangerous intersection, but if, whatever development goes in here, we need something in place to create a better, safer intersection there. And if it is going through a development, let's say, you know, I have other questions about, you know, is that, would that, I'm gonna call it an easement or right for us to use those roads, would that be perpetual? I mean, it could never be taken away from us if, let's say, a signalized intersection was put in at that, at that entrance on Carrottoke Highway, would, would we be able to know that we can use that and never be barred from going through there? So that would be, that would be another concern that I have, is, you know, the signal and the safety light there. I guess another thing that I wanna bring up that's, kinda hasn't been spoken here, but, but I wanna talk about it, is just, you know, it's been presented to us in a couple of different ways. I mean, there was, it was affordable housing for teachers and firefighters, and then it was possibly as an overflow for weekly rentals, and then there's been some discussion about maybe vacation packages going in there. It's just, kinda generates a lot more questions than answers for us as to what, what is gonna go in there, and how, you know, that could affect, I guess, our, our neighborhood environment and the safety in our neighborhood. If it, you know, I could see a situation where if it was affordable housing, let's say, where, where maybe we don't all feel quite as safe as we do right now. We, a lot of us don't even lock our doors at night. If you've got these 39 units here, and then, it's my understanding that if you guys approve this, that if the UDO changed, and then there was another commissioners' meeting, and maybe it was approved, I mean, I guess we could have maybe another 39 or 40, so, you know, maybe we end up with 75 or 100 units here. Could they possibly, at some point in the future, become, I'm gonna call them apartments, apartments where we maybe have some problems in the neighborhood? That's a lot of people. Do we have the police presence in our neighborhood to, to protect the citizens of this community from that type of, you know, multi, I guess, high-density housing? I mean, is it there? I don't know, but that is a question that I would like to present to you. I guess what, one of the other things that I would, would like to encourage you is, I've heard this additional conditions and additional provisions and enforcements to just, whatever, whatever your decision is, to please put in place provisions and conditions that protect our property values, that keep our neighborhood safe, and to keep, keep us safe at the intersections there. I've got, I brought a couple of pictures I'd just like to hand out and pass around that might help you out. These are three adjacent properties that, two of them are directly across the street, and one of them is The Creatures, and they're actually up the top left-hand corner, they adjoining the property there. So this could give you an idea of what some of the architectural standards are. And if you'd just give me a minute more, I know there was some discussion about architectural standards and the enforcement of that. There are, there are, I guess, districts in Nagshead, that if you wanna build a home there, you have to meet the architectural standards, and they have a tabulation schedule, and all of these other things, that as a builder, or developer, contractor, or homeowner, you have to do certain things and meet these requirements, or you don't get a building permit. So, I know it's done in other areas, and, and I feel like it could be done here. Whatever goes into this development, if you hold it to a high enough standard, and you make sure that we're protected in all these other ways, then maybe it would not devalue our property. But if you just kinda give this thing a carte blanche approval without putting all these standards in place, we're, we're really at the mercy of, you know, whatever could come down the pipe. So, with that, I thank you very much for your time, and I'd like to pass these around.
Mr. Watkins, I wanna ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Are you telling me that you think the people on West Mobile Road would want that additional connection?
I, I think what the people on West Mobile Road want is probably a signalized intersection at the end of that street, at West Mobile and Carrottoke Highway, and from what I'm hearing behind me, what, what the fear is from, from the neighbors is, is just what we talked about, is this very quiet residential neighborhood back there, and we're gonna get a whole lot of traffic going around through the neighborhood that, you know, we just really don't wanna have. So, no, I don't, I don't think we want the connection under West Mobile. My whole point was that if you decided that, you know, we were gonna have that connection, that you would give us, you know, the right to use, it had been brought up at another meeting, the right to use that safer connector, but, I mean, if you ask me straight up, no, I, I don't think we want that at all.
Okay, thank you very much.
One quick...
Yes, sir.
Mr. Watkins, is this, is this picture here, is this in Kilmarlik, or is it...
No, that's my house.
Is that your house?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it looks just like one in Kilmarlik.
That's my house, my next-door neighbor's house, and The Creatures' house. All of our properties are either directly across the street, or, as I said, The Creatures adjoining the property.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
I sympathize with you as far as traffic. If you'll look at the minutes of the last meeting, we tried to get, we're trying to get a traffic light at two developments in Moayok, and it's up to DOT, it's not up to us.
I, I, yes.
I live at the Carolina Club in a curve with no light, so I know what you're going through, but it's not up to us, and we can't make, I don't think we can make restrictions as far as traffic lights, whether Elon puts it in there, it's not up to us, and I know what you're going through with the curve.
It sorta seems like, like an archaic way of doing things. You don't get NC DOT's input until after you've approved the project, and then...
Well, we can't get them to, to, to put traffic lights in with existing.
Right.
All right, I have a question, and, Mr. Woody, we were talking about stormwater, is the golf course right across the street?
No.
I see a, I see, it looks like, something looks like a fairway.
That's, that's behind my house.
Okay, but that's part of the golf course.
That's part of the golf course, that's right.
And there's a pond right behind that runs the, parallel to your back property line? That's a pond area?
Yeah, there's, there's, the, there's three ponds back there.
Okay, so I'm just wondering how that, if that would help alleviate some of the flooding issues that Mr. McMillan had. Again, I'm just, I, I'm just, I'm looking.
Well, okay, I'd like to just make one note about that. All, all the rest of us that are in the neighborhood and on West Mobile, we're all on well water. We don't, we don't have county water. I tried to get county water and couldn't get it. So, that's, that was a concern with, you know, whatever goes in here, and the, and the septic, and how it's treated, and how it's monitored, all those types of things, because the rest of us, you know, would be directly affected if there was a problem with, with the septic.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Brett?
Thank you for getting the run.
Brett A. Lee.
Brett A. Lee.
That's right.
We sound important when we come on.
I am Brett A. Lee at 209 West Mobile Road. Been in the construction industry for 32 years, kinda know how things work, and how things get approved and changed. I do have some friends on the planning board, which I contacted after the last meeting. I understand the code changes were, that if you put a development in now, you must have some kind of retention pond put in the property, and as it stands now with the existing permit, it's going to be drained into our ditches, which feed both sides. Now, on a given rainstorm, which we've been having lately, they fill right up to the top, whether it's two or three inches. That's a concern for us as far as we have well water. Is that gonna impede, is there any studies done by that? If there's a retention pond changing the code, why has that been put in place? Because this existing plan could impede other neighbors. And as far as mirroring what everybody else has said, my concern, which was brought up at the last meeting, was it was going to be year-round rentals, and then it changed to maybe one or two or three-day rentals, or overflow. I do heating and air conditioning, I can go into any house that has four bedrooms, and there's 12 people staying there, because they're all split the cost, and they're sleeping on the floor, or the couch, or whatever, and there's 10 cars in the driveway. Is that what may happen here? If you have somebody who's gonna come down with three families, and they wanna come down early and beat the traffic, as far as I know right now, there's two parking spaces per unit. What if you get five cars that come in? Where's the overflow addressed for that? It sounds to me like everything that is being looked at is a year-round, or maybe three, three-person family is going in these units. Now, if you go to a one- or two, three-day, or weekly, you know as well as I do, with the economy, people are gonna split the cost. So you may have two or three cars coming there with 10. How is that regulated through the county? And how is that, if you, if you propose this and you pass this, how is that regulated that if he does rent it for three days, and you have three families that are gonna sneak in there? It's under one name, happens all the time. How is that gonna be regulated? The other thing is, the big issue is the road access, which Mr. O'Neill brought up. That is, that's a big no-no. Number one, we have, well, I'm speaking for all of you, so, I mean, we have the golf course that goes around through Harbinger Ridge Road, and then you have the get-go there. So if you have vacationists, everybody golfs, they're all gonna come down our way with their GPSes, probably speed, and we got kids in the neighborhood, young kids, small children, how is that gonna affect it? They're not gonna go out on the highway. On a Saturday, they're gonna look out there and see, the car ain't moved for 20 minutes, they're gonna look on their GPS and go, "Oh, we can go around here," so we're gonna have everybody going to the golf course, which they can access from the other... everybody going to the golf course, which they can access from the other side, and the get-go to get beer. So those are concerns. If it was a year-round for firefighters, EMS, that was our understanding in the beginning. What happens when you have overflow or vacationers? How's the garbage gonna be addressed? You know as well as I do, there's forty-seven bags of garbage, they're either in the garbage can or they're left there. How's that gonna be addressed? There's, there's all kinds of concerns with us as far as that end. If it went to a year-long, year-round rentals, you know, low-income people that are struggling, we can live with that. But I'm understanding that it's gonna be an overflow issue, a rental issue, as far as one or two, three days. Maybe somebody doesn't want to rent for the week for seven thousand dollars, they want to come down for three days and hit the beach and then go home, you know? How is that gonna impact how many people you put in these? I want to know from you how you regulate that when you approve this. Are you just going under the understanding that it's X amount of people will be in each of the units? Or is it up to the owner's discretion to put twelve people in there and have, you know? How does that regulate it, and how is that enforced? Basically, are putting a hotel in if you rent it three days or two days, and you have thirty-nine units? If you do the math, and you took the property and made it residential, how many houses could you put in there on that property? If there's twenty-six acres, and I think it's three-quarters of an acre or an acre, you could put twenty-six houses in there. What is the impact of having seven or eight people per unit in a house that's gonna now affect the traffic? If you're gonna do that, then leave them off our road. Put a nice tree line up, you want to put brown shingles on, gray shingles, that's up to you, I don't care, you know? Our issue is, when it came into effect, that the planning board brought this up, one of the planning board members came in and said, if you're gonna put low-income housing in and help out the community, why are you putting a tennis court in? Why are you putting a swimming pool in? You know, I'd like to have that too. Can I use it too on my block? Can I go down there with my swimming trunks and use it? Or, you know, we wanted to know, and then it came up that it was gonna be overflow or a weekly rental, you know? I understand he has a business and he wants to do it, but I think that area doesn't justify, as far as the traffic pattern, having all those contained people in that given area. Just alone, if the statistics say that there's going to be an average of two or three drivers per unit, and you're talking forty units, okay? You're talking over a hundred people who are gonna exit our block or go out that way. Theoretically, they're not gonna go to the highway and make a right, they're gonna come down our block and then try to feed out, or try to go behind us and gain some, that's just common knowledge, that's human, humans are gonna say they're gonna do much better by going around the block. So we have issues with the driveway. We're not against the development of the property, we're not against, if he meets all the criteria, is, I want to know how it's enforced, after you meet all the criteria, on putting people in there. How many people can you put in there? Is that up to the county, or you just say, okay, I passed it, he can do whatever he wants now?
Let me, let me answer that. I'm not sure that the county has the authority to tell anybody how many people they can have in their house.
Okay.
Your house, my house, or his house.
Okay.
I know, as we speak right now in Raleigh, they're in the midst of passing laws that are gonna take the discretion away from elected officials on some of the things that you're discussing tonight.
Right.
The stormwater, there is a stormwater plan that is required before he can go forward that addresses that the stormwater has to remain on his property, not yours. Is that not correct?
That's correct. The post-development discharge cannot exceed the pre-development discharge.
It was my understanding by one of the planning members that I talked to, is that he pulled the permit before the ordinance was put in place, so he has the right to access both ditches and use that under the old ordinance. That's what he told.
That ordinance has been in place since the nineties.
Well, whatever passed is past February, which was a retention pond, was now required, is what one of the board members told me, the planning board members, and because we were concerned about having both ditches filled with runoff from the parking lot. And he said, because the permit was pulled before the zoning change, or whatever came through this winter, that they still had the right to access both ditches on the street and not have a retention pond put in. And I'm just telling, I don't know everything, I'm learning kinda as I go here.
And I certainly don't either, but I don't think you can pull a permit before you have an approved plan, so I don't think.
Well, whatever, he said they were under the old, maybe because grandfathered in that...
I suspect what they're talking about is a stormwater management plan that's being developed, and we're gonna be voting on soon.
Yes.
Could possibly be that.
Something had passed this winter that had changed it.
This is not passed, we reviewed it this past winter.
Okay, maybe that's what it was, and they said that they still had accessibility to both ditches on the street for runoff.
I'm not aware of that.
I didn't even know that until they brought that up, but told me to bring that up in the meeting.
Mr. Woody, can you address that?
The requirements for retention ponds exist today, they, like you had said, they probably have since the nineties. There is a stormwater ordinance you're considering, which makes it even more stringent, and they don't have any vesting against that stormwater ordinance that you're considering later tonight.
So is it safe to say that his planning board member gave him some bad information?
He had incorrect information.
Well, I brought up well-water issues, and then we were under the understanding at the last meeting that the runoff could be put in both ditches, and then it would run down the block, and on a given good rainstorm, the ditches are full as they sit.
Well, to summarize, stormwater plan has to be done, submitted by the state, to the state, approved by the state, engineered, and you get a permit, it's approved.
Okay.
So far as the ingress and egress on the West Mobile Road, I don't usually disagree with staff every time, but I do understand the concern of the people that live in that area not wanting the additional traffic out and trying to get around through the back way. I certainly do understand that.
I think that would calm a lot of opposition.
But I will say, the occupancy, there's nobody in this county or this state that can tell somebody how many people, unless it's unsafe.
Right.
Condition.
Fire hazard.
Fire hazard or whatever.
We're concerned about the traffic issue where you, you know, what people do behind closed doors is their business, but if you do rent it and you bring in a certain amount of family members, then you have exacerbated the situation with the traffic as far as having three families per unit as opposed to one. And now you elevate it thirty-nine units into...
I certainly understand where you're coming from.
If we get maybe rid of the access on our road, I would think that would curtail some of the anxiety, because they are gonna use our road as a convenience issue with golf, and...
Certainly understand that issue.
That's my concerns, and hopefully everybody else is affected.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, we did bring up about the parking issue. We do have control of the parking, so let Mr. Woody, that was another one of his concerns that he had.
Parking, minimum parking standards are, there's a ratio to the number of bedrooms, and that applies to every house in Curry, kinda even the ones in the Outer Banks, so there's no, there's a parking center that exists. In this case, there is some overflow parking at the clubhouse that can be used, and you could, I mean, in some respects, the advantage of a putt is supposed to be that you can share parking anywhere, so you could even have people park in the lawn vacations property or any other property. So all the parking that's created, be it commercial or residential, all has joint use on this property, in addition to the minimum standards that apply to everybody.
I have a stormwater question.
Yes, sir.
Mr., or Commissioner Griggs, how deep is your pond?
I haven't tested it, but I was told it's about seventeen, sixteen, seventeen feet deep.
My question is, having a retention pond, do we have any control, 'cause you talked about, once you got to a certain level...
Yeah, where I live, once you got through that, I call it gumbo mud, it just, most of the soil down in Lower Curry, talking about...
The sand.
It's loamy, and it drains very well. However, there is that section, that strata of that gumbo mud that retains the water.
My question is, do we have control on a retention pond, that it has to be a certain depth to get past this level? Do we have any control?
We don't control the depth, but we can control the capacity. So this development has to hold a ten-year, twenty-four-hour storm, which is a pretty big storm event. So it's, they have to prove or demonstrate to the county engineer that they have capacity to hold this stormwater event. That could be done through more ponds, deeper ponds, whatever it is.
All right, that was all I had signed up. Is there anyone who didn't speak?
I'd like to say a lady.
I'm gonna let the lady go, and then you guys can finish up.
Hi, County Commissioners, my name's Carolyn Hickock, I'm from the Deer County area. So, I just want to say that I work for Elon, and the things that my boss does for this community is unbelievable. And when he tells you he's going to do something, he means he's going to do it. He's not gonna build some project that your neighbors would not be proud of. Anyway, I just want you to know that he does a lot for this community, as far as the hot dogs he gives to the food pantry. He wants this community, and he wants to make it better. I mean, the things that, some of the emails are ridiculous. I mean, I feel, I feel for you, Butch. So, but I mean, I just want y'all to know that there's no reason to act like that. All you have to do is come in and talk to him. We have had several people from the community come in and talk to him. They turned around and walked back out the door and said, we're not going to any more meetings. I mean, all they had to do was sit and listen to him. He will tell you what he's doing. So anyway, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. You can be last.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, and I'll try to be brief. I have heard the residents speak, and I understand their concerns. I think, you know, a couple of things is, that need to be pointed out. Affordable housing, there's a, I guess it's a lack of a better word. You know, what is intended to be built there is not low-income housing, it's not subsidized housing. It's housing that's affordable, as the county's policy states, for young families, seniors, people that are just starting out. It wants to, you know, my client runs a property management company. It's gonna be right in his backyard. He wants to have something that everyone can be proud of, that he can be proud of, I want to be proud of it, he wants the community to be proud of it. So, and I think it's unfortunate that affordable housing has that, has that negative connotation. I did want to address the access. The access on the West Mobile was something that was requested by staff, and I understand the residents' concern about traffic going back through there. You know, especially when, you know, sixteen weeks a year when it's backed up. I don't know if that's something that you want to remove or not, but the one thing I do want to point out is, the access for the residents of West Mobile Road, going through this development, and exiting from the northernmost intersection would be much safer, because anyone that's familiar with that, that curve, and the way the Barrier Island Station with the elevation there, site distance is very limited there. That's, and that coupled with the fact of West Mobile Road doesn't come into Keratoke Highway at ninety degrees, those are two factors that make it more dangerous. Those streets are shown our right-of-way, so the residents would have access, they wouldn't need an easement, they're, it's a right-of-way. I would be happy to answer any questions, I think that most of the stuff Ben has gone over very well. One thing with the amenities, it's the developers' intent to start putting in the amenities before we get to the midpoint. The main thing is, is anytime you have in North Carolina, anything that's over a single-family pool has to be designed to commercial standards. And it's as much about the operation and maintenance, you have to have someone there checking and maintaining that pool daily and keeping records, that's part of the requirement for a permit. That cost, until you get a certain number of people, is one of the biggest reasons why he wanted to wait for that pool opening. But it's his intent to start the other amenities before we get to that point. And I'd be happy to take any questions, 'cause I know this has run pretty late, and y'all have been very attentive and patient.
All right, Mr. Lord. What's the typical square, I mean, what's your, I had spoke to him before, references, what's the square footage of, like, the units, the thirty-nine?
The three, the footprint for the enclosed living space is shown on that as sixteen-hundred feet and two floors, so eight hundred feet per floor, twenty-five by thirty-two is the rough area. That's for three-bedroom. I had talked to Ben, because I had talked to him, some of these probably will be two-bedroom units also, so they might shrink, the two-bedroom units might shrink down a little bit, maybe a couple hundred feet, and what that would allow to happen is to give some relief in the front, give some more architectural features in the front. But that would be something that would be addressed in the site plan.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have two requests. One, to protect Mr. McMillan with a wider buffer, even though the trees are young, to leave them, understand his concerns. If your client would consider making that buffer wider and leaving the trees to let them grow up, if their pine trees are gonna grow pretty quick, that's one request. The other request is this, instead of having twenty units to start off with, would your client consider starting with just ten units? Let's see where it goes, allow people to have a chance to adapt and see where you're going, rather than starting with one half right out of the gate? Would your client consider that?
Yes, sir. That's been my client's intention, is to do one or two buildings to start.
I'm talking about with a cap of, say, maybe ten to start, where you don't have to do the pool, we just do ten, see where it's going, let everybody adapt, and rather than starting out with twenty.
No, I don't think it's my client's intention to build, he doesn't want to have these built as spec homes. He wants to have the demand for them. Now, you know, some of the, would be for yearly rentals for people that are just starting out, like I had said.
I'm just saying, start off with ten right now, and that's it for a while.
Well, I would think that that would be agreeable, because I don't think he wants to put the investment in for the cost and have them be vacant until there's demand for them.
That's the concern that I've got.
Can I speak for a minute? I'm Norman Bevah, I'm the owner of the lawn, so, I mean, I guess you guys should really be talking to me, too. The, basically, the thought process behind it initially was not to put up thirty-nine units. It was to start with one building, and these buildings, the design of them, I think Ben had put them up before, there's a building with four units, there's a building with five units, I'm gonna put up a building with, you know, five units if you guys approve it, see how it goes. You know, we're going to, I mean, the thought process behind it was to have quote-unquote "affordable" housing. I mean, I know I'm using a wrong term, give me the right term and I'll use it. But it's for, you know, worker bees down here, policemen, firemen, teachers, yeah, there's gonna be some rentals, I'd like to try that and see how that works out with my rental company. I get a lot of people that come down here early who say, yeah, we'd like to, we wish there was a place to stay, we wanted to come in two or three nights early. Okay, well, now they'll have a place to stay. With that, you have to provide some amenities, you know, which is where, you know, the pool and tennis courts and basketball would come in. This could tie into golf courses, too. You know, you've got three or four golf courses down here, people, I've talked to people at the Point, I've talked to people at the Carolina Club, you know, these guys come down here, where do they go? They go on the beach, they don't want to pay three hundred dollars a night to rent a place, they could be right there in Keratoke. What else does it do? Gives you guys money. Gives you guys money. You know, it, it's occupancy tax that's coming in. So, I mean, you know, there's a lot of good benefits to it. Is it, for me, the best use of the land? The highest and best use? Not at all. I mean, it's probably worth a whole lot more money as commercial property. It's not just about the money. I mean, there's 26 acres there. So, you know, why can't I do something that's gonna help out the community?
How about a wider buffer? Would you be open to that, to protect?
Along the back?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with that at all.
If, if we put stipulations in that the buffer were, I don't know what it is now, Mr. Woody, but...
It's, it's probably on the order of 10, 15 feet, I'd say, vegetated area. There's a building set, there's a building setback, which is one thing. The buildings have to be 50 feet from the property line. There's vegetation along, you know, 10 or 15 feet, so maybe you say like a 25-foot undisturbed buffer. And keep the 50-foot building setback.
You know, there, one of the things that I think need to be addressed is, there's a lot of vegetation on there, you know, and I think it's been talked about. There's more mature trees towards the northwest part of the property, and there's more scrub. You know, there's, until the phase, representative phase was developed, they would pretty much stay in the natural state, which would provide, you know, buffering for the, for that. Whenever you can use existing vegetation, you're better off. One, you've got, you know, it's in economics, it's a cost point. But also, you don't have to worry about establishing and, and having, you know, planning something and having it die. But it does, regardless, the existing vegetation would have to meet the, the standards of the, of the buffering ordinance.
I was just saying, maybe we can do a little bit better than the standard, just to protect Mr. McMillan.
Well, I, I think 25 feet is, is, is not unreasonable.
I would like that, if, you know, if it's passed.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
How would we do a motion that addresses, the, there's several issues. One, I'm taking from the general conversation, there's an issue relative to the use or not use of the access on Mobile Road.
Close it.
There is a issue relative to the expansion of the buffer in the west, western portion of the property.
25 feet in it.
And are there any other conditions that we have talked about?
Well, to put a cap at 10 instead of 19 to start off with.
What happens when he does 10? If he wants to do 11, he's got to come, I mean, how do, how do you envision?
I'm, I'm just trying to. What's your compromise?
I would suggest going with the 19, like it has been, because they're gonna build the amenities as they go with 19.
Okay, that's fine.
And, and what we had talked about before is adding a condition that once they have the limit's 39, and if there's gonna be any additional building on the other two phases that the applicant has to come back before the board and bring that, that's one of the conditions that I think we should put in there as well, 'cause that'll address any build-out issues that some of the community has had relative to having 100 houses or, or more than that.
With 39 buildings, does that include, if I'm, if I understand this properly, was he build, he was also building another building for his office?
That's just the residential. The 39.
That's just the residential, yeah.
Units, units, not buildings, but units.
Yeah. It's my understanding that the first part of the phase of commercial is pretty much already covered by the UDO as it now exists.
Right.
So actually, what I think we're talking about, and the majority of the concerns and issue are centered on the, is it Phase II, the proposed 39-unit portion of this application for requests for rezoning.
Well, I think probably we could go with the original 19 with the amenities built, and I don't think, you know, with the 19, then he would see whether or not it's a go, where he could move forward then to the other 20 units.
My question is, how would we word this to get it all in? One of the concerns that, that we need to do is make sure.
Just say it, say it in your motion.
Yeah, right there.
Motion to approve with the following conditions.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, help me out as we go forth here. I make a motion that we move to approve PB 1307 with staff recommendations due to its consistency with the 2006 land use plan, and that the request is reasonable and in the public interest. Additional condition contingent upon applicant's agree, agreement, the district is limited to a total of 39 multifamily units. Additional multifamily units must be approved by the Board of Commissioners. Additionally, we would.
Close.
Close the.
Access road.
The access road for the development to Mobile Road, thereby leaving the two proposed accesses to 158. We would make a motion to extend the rear buffer on the western portion of the property as designated on the plat to 25 feet. And what else?
Can we stipulate that the existing trees be left in that buffer?
He said he would.
Okay, but I'm just saying.
Dave.
Well, go ahead and say it.
I think the motion should read about the access on Mobile Road that it not be required, 'cause he still may need to have some kind of, not, not a connect, not necessarily connectivity, but he's gotta be able to access his property. So you just don't take it away. You just say that it's not required, then he can stub it out and, and put the access there, but he still can build his road to access his property, if that makes sense.
Well, it does, but then what control would we have that it would just not be alternatively turned into a egress and ingress to that?
Was this part of your motion?
What you just said.
Well, without having to go through the entirety.
Access to the mobile.
Yeah, without the, without having to go through the entirety of the entire motion, then let's, could we modify or amend the egress to West Mobile Road as not being required with the stipulation that it not be utilized as a thoroughfare for, I say, here's where we get into. How do you do that? How, I don't think you can do that. Yeah, I, I, I don't think you can do that.
Well, you just did.
Well, then, well, then the county would then be in a position of having to regulate that, enforce that. And I don't think that's a workable.
I take back what I said.
I think we need to just stub it.
There, there, there you go.
There you go. That's what I was trying to get to.
Strike that. Strike the, the amendment to that then, and just stub the access to West Mobile Road.
I second it.
We have a motion for approval in a second. We have any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item C, consideration in action, PB 08-03, Backwoods Hideaway, request for preliminary plat extension for 16-lot residential subdivision, Moyoc Township.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve that as we have in the past with a extension of preliminary plats.
We have a motion for approval. Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Five-minute recess. All right, we're back in session. Item D, public hearing in action, PB 1306, Keratuck County, request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 2, Administration, Chapter 6, Subdivision Infrastructure Standards, Chapter 7, Environmental Protection, and Chapter 10, Definitions and Measurement to Revise Existing Stormwater Requirements and Establish a Keratuck County Stormwater Before we go, I've got a simple question. Did the legislature pass a bill that says counties cannot enact any environmental regulations more strict than already exists by the state and federal government?
Well, the, the, the General Assembly has with some, with some exceptions. Of course, I'll just make, make an editorial comment. They, they call, call this bill to create jobs through regulatory reform, but everything I'm reading on local, local government lawyers' listserv is gonna be to create attorney jobs through regulatory reform, because it's probably gonna be a heck of a lot of litigation coming out of what the General Assembly has done, because it's not a whole, there's, there's a lot of confusion over some of the language they've placed into this particular piece of legislation. I think that the more that I look at it, I am comfortable that going forward tonight with this stormwater manual and regulation for this county could be justified and upheld under one of the exceptions, which is, let me find it. This, this legislation does not apply to any ordinance if adoption of the ordinance was and continues to be required by one of the following. A serious threat to the public health, safety, or welfare that is related to local conditions and is not adequately addressed in statewide statutes and regulations adopted or enforced by an environmental agency. So I would suggest that we would hang our hat, should you decide to adopt this ordinance amendment and manual tonight, on this prevention of stormwater and flooding, which is otherwise a threat to the public welfare. And I would argue that's, that's how we would, we would proceed under this particular new statute. I do wanna make one other comment about this particular statute. There are a number of other things that we would not be able to adopt. I thought today, earlier, that the, our National Flood Insurance Program might be in jeopardy, but I do now see that they have added, or did put into the bill a, a modification that would, that would allow for more stringent regulations if necessary to achieve discounted flood insurance rates under the National Flood Insurance Program. So that's good that they saw fit to do that. But I will also. There was some concern on some of the attorney listservs on, on the, on the internet about what they did having an effect on the National Flood Insurance Program and the discounted rates that persons can receive if their unit of local government has more stringent regulations than required by state or federal regulation. But I now see that the General Assembly took care of that by saying that is a type of more stringent regulation that we can adopt in order to continue to allow for the discounted rate under the National Flood Insurance Program. But there's still some confusion about a last piece. I'll just go ahead and note, that they, in this same bill threw in a provision about billboards, which basically appears to give billboards from the day of the bill forward everlasting life. But what they've done by this confusing language is that, that one could interpret, and this may be where some litigation comes from, one could interpret the language to mean that every other ordinance adopted prior, that relates to environmental regulation, adopted prior to the effective date of this bill, is deemed preempted and thus not effective. But hope that that's, that's, some, some different groups are trying to get them to amend this legislation to fix that and to fix that confusion. Nevertheless, as I say, for our purposes tonight, I think we can go, going forward, we, we would again hang our hats on the exception that we are protecting the public welfare due to our unique local conditions.
All right, thank you. Mr. Weatherly, is this one yours?
Yes, sir. I'm Eric Weatherly. I'm the county engineer, and I have with me Mike Doxy, who also be assisting if anything comes up. What I did read from the Association of County Commissioners was that counties may enact more stringent requirements if you get state approval from the agency that regulates it. In this case, for stormwater, it'd be Deaners, DWQ, and that it does necessitate a unique geographic or environmental condition, which is what Ike was going over, and that 75% of the commissioners approved the ordinance that we're speaking of. So that just.
That, that is another provision in the bill that allows for, despite all this other stuff we said you can't do, you go through about a four- or five-step process, which includes submitting your, your ordinance to the relevant environmental agency listed in the legislation, and they let you know within 60 days if you're good or not. Then your, your ordinance may become effective. That's a whole nother line of questions and issues and concerns, but as I said a moment ago, I don't, I do not think that what you're about to do tonight, we would, we would look to this particular provision for the exception. We would look to the other one that I talked about. That doesn't require an environmental agency approval.
Okay. With that said, I'd like to go over the proposed manual and the ordinances tonight. First off, previous presentations, we have been working on the stormwater manual for quite a while. You can see almost two years ago, we gave presentations to the professional community and to the Board of Commissioners, and then over the past two years, we've developed the manual. We've had recent work sessions with the professional community at the beginning of the year and pretty much laid out the plan. You see, we had no issues. We, we went again to the Board of Commissioners in another work session and laid out the manual. We've presented it to the planning board, and they did recommend approval on their July or June 11th meeting. So tonight, we are requesting approval of a new stormwater manual and to amend the ordinances. We would like to say that the ordinance would not become effective until September 1. That'll give us time to train staff and make a few grammatical changes in the manual. Okay, let's jump straight into the manual. Manual, the outline of the manual, Chapter 1's the introduction. Chapter 2 is the meat of the manual. It goes over the plans and the requirements. Then there's Chapter 3 and 4 are some more guidelines, BMP selections and LID guidelines. BMP is a state term used for stormwater facility best management practice. So if you hear me say BMP, I'm just talking about the stormwater system. And LID is low-impact development. That's a, another way of, of doing stormwater facilities such as cisterns or pervious pavers. Then you get into the appendices. It's got forms in there that makes it easier for staff to review and keeps everybody consistent. There's more guidelines. Appendix C is a maintenance plan that's we proposing to enact, and then plant list and some more design spreadsheets. So, basically, two types of stormwater plans, a minor stormwater plan and a major stormwater plan. A minor stormwater plan primarily serves the single-family residents and minor subdivisions on the outer banks. And then the major stormwater plan serves all the major subdivisions, anything greater than five lots or major site plans, which is commercial or multifamily. So we'll start off with the minor stormwater plans. The thresholds that kick you into a minor stormwater plan on a new single-family lot is when you exceed your lot coverage, or you put fill on your lot higher than your neighbor. And we'll talk about the, those two in greater detail. Also, on the outer banks, if you have a lot with more than 10,000 feet of coverage, you have to do a minor stormwater plan. Then if you're an existing single-family lot, if you go above the UDO standard for lot coverage, or you exceed the fill, you get kicked into the stormwater plan, or if you're a minor subdivision on the outer banks, or any minor subdivision that exceeds fill. So lot coverage and fill are what kicked you in to the stormwater plan.
When you say fill, is that physically bringing materials from another location? When you say fill, is that physically bringing materials from another location?
Yes, sir.
Or is that also the leveling of sand hills or properties on a
Bringing in fill from another location.
Thank you.
So, requirements. The minor stormwater plan simply says you have to hold a four-inch rain. Now, if you are just a typical stormwater plan, it does not require an engineer. The developer, the builder, the owner can do that with his building permit application. But if you do, there's alternatives that we allow in these systems, and in the alternatives case, you have to bring in an engineer. One of them would be if you want to use the soil as storage. Instead of digging your pond, you want to use the soil voids. Or another one is that if you exceed the lot coverage. So whenever you exceed lot coverage, you bring in an engineer as well. So I'll talk about each of those. First one I'll talk about is lot coverage. The UDO has standards for lot coverage. Basically, it's based on the size of the lot. A typical lot is 30% coverage. The UDO does allow you to go an additional 15% coverage above that if you have a stormwater plan. So that would be your minor stormwater plan. You could go up to an additional 15%. Or if you're in a subdivision that has a state-approved stormwater plan. The one I think of is the Currytuck Club. When they got a stormwater plan, they got approval for 40% lot coverage. So based on that, we allow them to go up to that 40, but not to exceed the 15% above the UDO. On the fill. Fill is not allowed greater than higher than your neighbor's lot, except for in two situations. One would be for the septic system, and one would be to get up to base flood elevation. So on the septic system, you can put 24 inches of fill on your lot for a septic system and another 12 inches of fill underneath your house. So that's 36 inches of fill that you can go up to. In this case, an engineer is not required. But if you want to go higher than that, you can to meet base flood elevation. On the outer on the mainland, you can go all the way up to the, what's called the regulatory flood protection elevation. But on the outer banks, we limit you to what the septic system criteria is. I feel like there's much more issues on the outer banks with the flood elevation criteria. And in these situations, an engineer is required to do that plan. And then finally, if you're greater than 100 feet from your neighbor, from your property line, you can put fill on your lot.
One more question. I'm sorry for interrupting you.
Please, yeah.
As we talk about lot coverage, does lot coverage include a structure that's built on pilings and has no ground floor?
Yes, sir.
Roof area is lot coverage?
That's correct.
Driveways also, right?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
With pervious surface, impervious surface.
So that's the minor stormwater plan. The next slide goes over to major. If you're ready to move on, we'll keep going. Okay, so the next one's the major stormwater plan. That's the big one. All subdivisions have to have a stormwater plan. That's always been that way. Nothing's changed there. And then major site plans. A major site plan is like a commercial development. So on a major site plan, you don't get kicked in unless you're disturbed you are building more than 10% lot coverage. We have some instances where somebody wants to put up a fruit stand. So if they're not developing that much land, as long as they stay under 10%, you don't have to have a stormwater plan. Also, if you're an existing lot and you're under the 10%, or you're more than the 10%, but you're doing less than 5,000 square feet of coverage, you don't have to have a stormwater plan. Before, it was 400 square feet, and we changed that to 5,000. And then finally, when you do get kicked into the stormwater plan, you have to do it for everything on that lot. So if you're an existing one, you go greater than 5,000 square feet on addition, then you've got to do the whole lot. All right, so the requirements for this plan. Okay, that's what you've been hearing. This is the big change in the ordinance, how much stormwater you have to hold. So basically, when we did this manual, the consultants did an analysis on our ditches and streams in the county, and they determined that most of our ditches won't carry more than a two-year storm from a wooded lot. Let me go over storms. You'll hear me say 10-year storm, five-year storm, two-year storm. A 10-year storm is a six-inch rain. These are rough numbers, but a six-inch rain. A five-year is a four-inch, and a two-year storm is a three-inch rain. So you've got a three-inch rain, a four-inch rain, and a six-inch rain. All right, so what this says is that a development cannot release a 10-year storm from that lot any faster than what a two-year storm would have done on a wooded lot. So basically, he's holding a 10-year storm, he's holding a six-inch rain, and he can't release it any more than what would have come off of it from a three-inch rain. Now, on commercial, we are a little more lenient on that. You can't release a five-year storm any faster than a two-year storm. So on a commercial, he has to hold a four-inch rain, and he can't release it any faster than a three-inch rain.
This sounds like a goof-up first.
Clear. You'll have to reread it. Before, it was a 10-year, 10-year. Now, it's a 10-year, two-year. So before, you couldn't release a storm any greater a 10-year storm any greater than a 10-year storm would have been before you developed it. Now, you've got to hold it down to a two-year storm. Before, you couldn't release it any more than a six-inch rain would have come off of before development, but now you've got to hold it to a two-year. Okay, there are alternatives. We do allow alternatives now. Before, we didn't. But if you're a development and you're on the sound front, or you're next to a swamp, that there's no need to hold that storm because you can there's no need to hold it to that level because the sound will receive it and you won't impact any of your neighbors. So in instances where you can do a downstream analysis and prove that the downstream will not rise, will allow you to reduce the size of that stormwater facility.
So you can put runoff in the sound?
No, no more than the state standard. Now, the state thank you. The state standard says you have to hold an inch-and-a-half rain. We say a six-inch rain. The state is an inch-and-a-half. The state is primarily focusing on water quality. We focus on flooding in this manual. And I think that leads to this House bill that we're talking about. Our stance is, in our geographic area, we are primarily concerned with flooding, and that's how we develop this ordinance. But if you're next to a sound and you're not worried about that flooding, then you can hold only the state standard.
But the state will still monitor water quality in that type of
Yes, sir. Other ways we allow you to reduce the size of the stormwater facility is with the LID. These are types LIDs was not allowed in the previous, but here, we allow you to look at cisterns and permeable pavements and those type things. But anytime you do that, you get into another engineering requirement. So like if you're a single-family lot, you want to put in pervious pavements. It's been shown that pervious half of the pavement could be counted as grass with these new permeable pavements. It infiltrates that well, so as long as the engineer does it, then we allow those. Maintenance easements are also part of the new manual. Lot line swells are always required in subdivisions. We require a 10-foot easement from each lot. And then drainage, we better define drainage maintenance easements. If you're draining greater than a five-acre area, you've got to have a 25-foot easement on each side at ditch, if possible, if this is a ditch running through your development. Or if you're on one of the major canals or waterways, then it requires a 50-foot easement.
Eric, what about downstream easements?
No, sir. We that was the big struggle in this manual, is the downstream and not having access to it or the ability to get to it, to clean it, without permission from every property owner. So the way we got around that in this ordinance is we're making them hold more. So we're making them hold what we feel like our streams can handle, and that's where the two-year storm came in. But if we could go downstream and make them clean it out all the way to the sound, we'd love to do that, but we just found that we couldn't get access and required the developers to do that.
Well, years ago, the state used to clean downstream. They didn't just maintain what's on the highway. They used to go back through the woods and maintain the ditches. Someone told me that's how DOT got its start, was they were cleaning ditches.
Lead ditches.
Yes, and there is a there is a lack of maintenance on these ditches that I believe Camden's addressing it now with a stormwater project, but that's a lot of the flooding problem is lack of maintenance on these ditches.
And we'd love to bring those we'd love to bring that to you, too, as far as a county-wide stormwater plan, similar to what Camden did. We're kind of watching Camden to see how that goes and
It's not going real well, so let's stick to this.
And then the maintenance plan that Vance was talking about, we have included now a maintenance plan in the ordinance, which basically says that a maintenance inspection checklist is required by all stormwater facilities. We put that checklist right in the manual. And then for major subdivisions and major site plans, an engineer has to certify those and stall correctly, and then you have to do an inspection and a maintenance of the stormwater. If your subdivision is less than five acres, it requires a three-year inspection by the owner, but if it's greater than five acres, it requires a yearly inspection by a certified professional. And we include the forms and everything right in the manual. Now, we're not requiring them to send in the inspection forms every year, but if we see a problem, we can always request these and then go from there. On the individual lots, for the fill or the coverage, we require inspection and maintenance by the owner, but we don't require the checklist form for just a single family. So yearly inspections will get most of the developments if they're greater than five acres. And just quickly to summarize some of the changes between the old manual and the old ordinance and the new ordinance. The difference in holding the 10-year versus holding the two-year, we did some examples of some subdivisions, and we picked a 100-acre subdivision, and you can see that the stormwater facility on the old ordinance took about 3% to 6% of the land, and on the new ordinance requires about 5% to 7% of the land. And then we did a seven-acre commercial, and the old took about 3% to 6% of the land for the stormwater facility, and the new one is between 4.5% and 7.5%. So it did go up some. But we did lessen the thresholds kicking in a commercial. That was the 5,000 square feet now that kicks you in. I was telling you about on the new one, we require the maintenance and inspections. On the new one, we allow the LID features, and the single family is basically unchanged. Before, you had to still hold the four-inch rain.
Eric, would you back up one slide, please? Maintenance plan requirements, okay. Okay, it says less than five acres inspection and maintenance of stormwater every three years by the owner.
Correct.
What guidelines will the owner have to know what to inspect for and what to maintain?
The manual goes over it. It has the checklist forms that we want them to use, so the manual tells you basically what to check for, based on what type of facility you are, and so it does a good job with giving you a good guideline of what we're going to be looking for.
And they would have to be turned in to whom?
We don't require them to be turned in. They're to be kept on their file, but if there's ever a problem that we see, we would go in and request those forms. I think with the staff we have, it would be too overwhelming for every stormwater system in the county to be submitted to us on a yearly basis, so right now, we're requesting that.
Is there any penalty if they don't keep up with their paperwork?
No penalty.
There's not a direct penalty, but we and it does say this, the county can pursue enforcement actions under our typical enforcement procedures. We could do a notice violation and then follow up with civil citations if it wasn't corrected.
So there's no teeth in it, that's my point.
I think on a complaint I think on a complaint-driven basis, there absolutely is teeth in it.
Teeth in it, okay, you're right.
They can be fined $500 a day.
So that's the manual. I'll slip on into the ordinances then. The stormwater ordinance in the UDO is Section 7.3. And basically, the ordinance follows the guideline of the stormwater manual. The Section 7.3.1 through 7.3.3 is a basic, general information. 7.3.4 includes all the stormwater sizing requirements, fill requirements, maintenance requirements, and then 7.3.5 goes over your alternative systems that we talked about with lot coverage and reduction in size. And then we hit the House bill note that we talked about previously with the regulatory reform requirements, but I think Ike went over that. So that is my presentation, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Who has questions?
I have one.
Okay, Mr. Martin.
What is going to be the impact, you know, on developers and individuals with the more strict stormwater runoff? Is that going to be significant where we would see, I guess, an increase in cost in housing?
Yes, sir. The best way we could think to address this was with the typical examples. You can see, for instance, this subdivision where it takes, say, on average, 5% of the land set aside for a stormwater facility, it would change to, say, 7.5%.
Okay.
Now, to put a dollar number on that would be difficult, but it will take up it will be a bigger pond.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll add a note or two to that, and Ben can help me out. Even though it takes more area for the stormwater pond, in those subdivisions, they're already required to have how much open space, Ben, 30%?
30 to 40% open space.
They're already required to have 30 to 40% open space.
So we can use that.
So we're already, you know, and they can put stormwater in open space. The beauty about it is, those developers building that subdivision are going to need dirt to fill those lots, so, you know, it's it's not a bad situation at all, even though they're larger than what we have now. The dirt will be needed to fill, and it's already covered under open space.
Thank you.
Who else? Yes, Mr. Griggs.
One question. This is kind of a follow-up, I guess, to Commissioner Idlet's observation. What what is the board's feeling about compliance with this new program here? There was a mention of it being complaint-driven, and that's always I think that's kind of problematic because it's hit or miss, and it waits it waits for damage. because it's hit or miss, and it waits, it waits for damage before it's addressed as opposed to being proactive and, and keeping things not becoming a problem. So, I, I guess, I guess it's just a philosophical approach from what the county's done in the past with complaint-driven compliance versus proactive compliance. What's the board's thoughts about that?
If something's wrong, they're going to complain.
And keep in mind that this is a state stormwater system, and the state does inspections or supposed to, so we rely right now on the state's inspections, but then also, we, we will have our own teeth that we can add to it on top of what the state says, and then you got the neighbors that complain. But to, for us to be able, there must, I'm going to take a stab, but there's over 300 stormwater systems in the county, and you're looking at the team here.
Well, I mean, my, my, my thoughts and comments very simply are this. Stormwater is an issue everywhere in this county. We've worked for how long now putting a stormwater maintenance plan together, manually?
Two years.
We've had professional engineers we've hired to bring in and do that, and so now, we've, we've got something in front of us, and, but yet, and you know as well as I know, best management practices, as you called it, those ponds, by virtue of how they are maintained, is how effective they're going to be.
Yes, sir.
So, if we have to wait for one to fail before we even know anything about it and being complaint-driven, well, we're behind eight ball, and that's, that's my thoughts. I mean, it's just, it's another, another piece of paperwork that don't mean a whole lot to me.
Anyone else?
Mr. Woody said you could, if it's, if there is a complaint and they find a violation, it could be $500 a day.
I, I think there's enforcement teeth. I think that the challenge probably is, is enforcement capability by staff. Our, we, we lack the resources to be proactive, but now, we have some teeth, but it's harder to correct when it's an ongoing violation that's existed for many years.
I mean, to me, I don't want to fine anyone. That's not the point. The point is, I want them to maintain the ponds and do what they're supposed to do so they're effective and they're long-lasting and function as they're supposed to be. I don't see anyone had to pay a fine. That's the least that I want to see.
Yeah. I'll let it, I'll address that, Vance.
Place the round, sir.
Yeah, I'll let it address that. In the past, without a maintenance provision or ordinance, there's no way we can go ahead and make people do this or do that.
Understand.
But with this, we, you know, when I'm riding up and down the road, I can, if I see a problem, you know, it's, nobody has to complain to me then. The neighbors don't have to complain to me then for me to, to do something. You know, it'll be, uh, we'll see it, you know, pretty quick if things are not maintained. This will give us a way to be able to make them maintain their stormwater infrastructure.
Well, I mean, just from my perspective, if someone, if they had a five-acre impoundment that they're using for stormwater, if they were required to do the checklist and turn it in to, to someone, then there's your checks and balance, to me, but...
Commissioner Idlet, just ask a question. How do other localities monitor this? Anybody answer?
Nobody has one.
To my knowledge, counties do not. Municipalities are allowed to do utilities, stormwaters, but counties are not allowed to have a stormwater system or have, so...
So, we're no different then?
We're no different in any, I think Camden is the closest one I've seen to be, to try to be proactive in this situation, and, but I don't know how any of the other ones do it either. Primarily, it's relied on the state inspections.
Any other questions?
I just have one question. As far as the, the new guidelines, there's some proposed developments in the northern part of the county. If these applications come in prior to the September 1, they would be having to adhere to the no-plan versus the, the new plan. Is that going to create, do you think, an influx of applications prior to 9/1, or do you think it would be, you know?
Well, we did, at least when, when we adopted the new UDO that became effective January 1, we did put the two-year in there. So, right now, they still have to build the stormwater facility to release no greater than the two-year. So, the main thing that we're looking for is currently in the UDO. The rest of this, you know, I, I don't see it creating an influx of development to, to meet that, no.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none. I'm going to open the public hearing. I have no one signed up. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this issue before I close the public hearing? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Move for approval.
A second, that motion?
Motion for approval and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No.
Thank you very much.
Passes six to one.
Thank you. Six to two, excuse me, or five to, no.
Five to.
That's 75%?
I think it is.
All right, next. Yeah. Me. All right, next item. Public hearing in action, request for no-wake signs in canals in Waterview Shore subdivision. Do we have anyone here representing this issue tonight? Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chairman, we have a request from the Property and Association of Waterview Shores. They've asked, and you have a, a picture, subdivision picture? Ken?
I was doing math and not percentage.
No, we're...
You got that picture.
Okay, you've got a picture, you've got a picture in your agenda packages that shows the subdivision and this, the series of internal canals to that subdivision, and they're asking that they be added to the list of WRC enforced no-wake zones. It does require this body to make the first motion. We sent an application up for WRC for the concurrence. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from anyone?
Move to approve.
Second.
Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing. Did I already do that?
Yeah.
Okay, did I close it?
No.
It's getting late. I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion? Do we have a second? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. New business? Before we go to new business, that 75% rule is after the new law is passed, and it has not been signed yet.
Well, plus, as I pointed out, in my opinion, we would be proceeding under a different exception, so that 75% rule would not apply.
Right. Just, I saw the guys turning white back there. I want to help them out a little bit. You can breathe now, you can breathe. New business, consideration of offer to purchase real property. Mr. Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, Currituck County's been approached by NC DOT, and you see on the screen, they have a, a site plan where they were going to do some modifications, improvements to the Knott's Island Ferry on the mainland-side landing. If you look to the top right-hand side, you see there's a little strip of land. The best we can tell, it looks like it was at some point in time, was a continuation of Courthouse Road into the water. I think there was some wharfs or boat landings back in the day. That property shows to be owned by Currituck County. Across the, or catty corner from that, you see the, the Snowden property, and they're looking to acquire that also to put in a new facility, parking, what they call, they're calling the facility a welcome center. If I go back up to the piece that the county owns, NC DOT has made an offer. They had the property appraised and surveyed, and they've submitted an offer to Currituck County for $8,900 for that parcel, which is just a fraction of an acre, and are bringing that tonight for your consideration. I'd be happy to answer, trying to answer any questions you might have.
Questions of the manager?
I have one. What's your recommendation?
I recommend, accepting the offer.
I have a question. Mr. Woody, could you put your pointer on that piece of property again?
It's basically a ditch and a little bit of property behind it. If you're familiar with the picnic shelters are, they're probably on the property, and then there's a ditch there that, that goes out. And I think, I think they've been mowing the grass and maintaining it, thinking that they owned it, and they, when they went and started looking at this project, they discovered that they actually do not own it.
Well, I know they're dying to put tolls on the ferry. This piece of property, is that going to be part of that program?
Well, the, the whole facility and tolling operation will actually occur in the parcel across the street. I don't see this as being critical to the issue of whether they place tolls or not. If it is, they have the power of condemnation, and they certainly can come back and take it from the county if we choose tonight not to move forward with the acquisition, but as has been explained to me, that this parcel is not, has no bearing on whether the General Assembly determines a toll of the facility or not. In fact, their comment is they're moving forward with the welcome center and the parking, whether the General Assembly places a toll or not. The, the expansion has nothing to do or not, is not contingent upon the General Assembly's decision to toll or not toll. They're moving forward with the improvements, and the parcel that we have does not impact those improvements.
Okay, Mr. Idlet?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. If it gives any, any inkling that it could possibly have any impact on tolling, I will be voting no. Thank you.
Are we going to vote now?
Whenever you, if you want to make a motion.
I'd like to make one comment before y'all vote.
Yes, sir.
The ditch that Dan pointed out that runs through that parcel is very integral to draining the street out here, so I don't know if they've mentioned anything, what they may do with that. I mean, typically, it would be against the law for them to close it up, but, you know, they are the law sometimes, so, that is an issue. The ditch needs to stay able to drain.
There's no conversation about closing the ditch. As Mike mentions, it's integral to the drainage, not only of that site, but the site's down from here back up the road, but there's no conversation about closing the ditch.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
There is a definite interest for that piece of property for some reason other than it being a ditch, I would suspect, but anyhow, that's, I've made my thoughts known.
All right, any other questions of the manager? Hearing none. The offer is on the table, and we need a motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval based on county manager's recommendation to follow through with this.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign?
No.
No.
No. Okay, I guess the no's habit then, right?
Can we, was that, was that four no's? I'm not sure who all...
Oh, no, no, I said no.
I said no.
Three no's, I guess.
Now...
Oh, Paul, too.
Now, Mr. Manager, if they'll come back and explain what they plan on doing with this property and assure us that it's not going to be used to collect tolls to the people of Currituck County, then I'll give due consideration, but until that time, I need something a little more than...
All right, but through their condemnation, they can tell you whatever, right?
They sure can.
Okay. But they got to do it.
But that's a drawn-out process. It'd be a lot easier for them to come back and tell us.
So, you're asking for them to appear up in front of you?
I'm asking for something written, some map or something showing what a toll facility would look like, because I know they've got it because they were told to do it, and they just haven't done it yet, so...
And that facility would be on the parcel they already own and additional land that they're trying to buy from the Snowdens.
So, it doesn't have anything to do with the ditch?
But there would have to be some kind of a traffic flow through there in order to...
It's on, it's on, you can see that the plan is to come down, and the parcel they own right now, you can see, it's kind of, it's black lines, you can kind of see it hatched. You would turn just past Bill Rom's old office. You would come into the property. The building would be there, and then you would stack to the, with the south side of that parcel there. You would stack there, waiting for the ferry to load, and then they would send you across the street and load. It's kind of hard to see on there, but you can see the...
And traffic lights on each end.
You can see the black lines that kind of shows their, their traffic pattern on the site, but I certainly will relay the board's vote to NC DOT.
And I think additionally...
Did they not allude to also putting stoplights on each end?
They discussed the need to, being since they're stacking on the, what appears to be the wrong side of Courthouse Road, they did talk about the, they're exploring the, the possibility of putting traffic control devices on both sides so that when the ferry's loading, they could turn red, stop the through traffic, load the ferry, and then let the traffic go through.
If what they're saying is true, then they'll close, they'll have to close, fill that ditch in.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
No stoplights for the citizens, but they can get some stoplights to collect the toll.
Thank you.
How about that?
I'm trying to figure out how a ditch would, would, I'm confused.
All right.
Next. It's the bait and switch.
Item B, appointments to game commission. I believe that is, Ms. Gilbert?
I'd like to go ahead and reappoint Mr. Austin with all of the due diligence that our clerk has done to come up with the availability for him to be reappointed. I'd like to reappoint Mr. Willie Austin.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is appointment to senior citizen advisory board. That would be David Griggs.
And my understanding is Miss Makings, Miss Makings can be reappointed, and if that's correct, I would reappoint her.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda?
Motion for approval.
We have a motion for approval. Second, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. McCord, you have anything for Commissioner's report?
I actually have a couple things. I'm on me, so kind of surprised I remembered them. Pet owner, so if I get any more hate emails this week, own three dogs was one thing. I know we've all got them. The condolences, I know, I think every one of us attended the Wheeler's funeral services or the viewing. Has a huge loss to the county. Johnny Wheeler's been battling cancer for, what, five years now? Really nice people, first class. He's volunteered in Currituck County for 30-plus years, and like I said, it was a real nice service at Providence Baptist. There's a lot of people there. The main thing, and then also condolences, which is not here in Currituck County, but there's funeral services for a law enforcement officer, Cam, who previously was a Currituck County employee, I believe in the early 2000s, for Anthony Forbes, so same thing, you know, condolences to his family represent that situation.
Thank you. Mr. Griggs?
Uh, just briefly, I sent some pictures to the commissioners depicting the new renovation of the ABC store up in Moayak. If you haven't had an opportunity to go and look at it, I think you'd be impressed. I think they did a good job with it.
Take your word for it.
You got to drink it for it, gets you.
Mr. Martin?
Uh, nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Idlet?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Patrick? Ms. Gilbert?
Absolutely nothing tonight.
One quick thing, I did speak with Representative Steinberg yesterday, and the foreign trade zone did get passed in the House. It went to the Senate where it had some problems in committee. I don't, I don't know that it was because the bill was a problem, it was just because the Commerce Committee wasn't meeting, but I believe he's been successful getting it attached to another bill, and hopefully, that'll get passed out of the Senate for concurrence and signed by the governor, so he felt pretty positive about that and talked about different things going on in Raleigh. They've been running a marathon, as we're all aware, and he said to wish everyone well. Mr. Scanlon, you have anything?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recognize and congratulate Corolla Fire and Rescue. 30 years ago, July, they started with a pickup truck and formed themselves in 1983 with former Commissioner Barry Nelms as their first fire chief, but they're celebrating their 30th anniversary.
Congrats.
Yes.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.